This is a meeting. I don't think that. Don Conway, I'm just gonna make you really miserable right now till you fix this.
This is what we had to do.
Oh, you know what? I think he just needs to turn it down.
Yeah, yeah, is there all gonna be a mess?
Hello? Okay, that's good. It's karaoke night in Town Hall.
I've been wanting to say that for 13 years.
So, our first application is 22 Elm Place Company LLC at 356 Greenwich Avenue for a final site plan to renovate the lower level of the current Apple Store. And is the applicant here?
Yes.
Hello applicant? Number four is postponed, which is James Gould at 94 Paxland Road. And hello, you flew in from Cupertino today?
I'm from corporate, but I'm here in New York.
And I'm the store manager.
Okay, and you're the store manager. Hello, okay. So, go ahead.
So, the purpose of this meeting, as I was told through the expediter, hello? Oh, great.
It's good.
All right. So, based on what was told to me by the expediter, who unfortunately couldn't make it here, is that the purpose of this is to determine the extra square footage in the unused space that we're now gonna be putting into use. So, just to speak on it, it's a simple Backstage 2.0 upgrade, is what we call it.
A who?
A Backstage 2.0, you know, like the new, you know, like...
It's a break room upgrade.
Yeah, it's a break room upgrade. That's literally all it is. Right now, everyone is kind of sitting around a narrow table by, you know, the office space. And we're trying to give everyone a better work environment. So, you know, we put back into that area offices that the managers can use, 'cause right now, they're all using just a strip desk, like bench seating. And we're providing a couch, a nice bigger area to eat, some vending machines, bike rack, nothing, you know, for extra work purposes. It's all just to give them a better experience.
Okay.
So, there wouldn't be hiring more employees, or...
That was the big question for us, is if you would be hiring any more employees. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
Do you want to, any issues on this, the, what was it, the usual cadence of employee?
Yeah, no, we asked about that, just to explain that. The other question we had is just confirming the FAR is not changing.
Correct. The FAR is not changing. It's currently, to my understanding, a space that, when we took over the lease, was simply empty. And it was, you know, marked as, I don't know specifically, but we want to use it. And during the process, filing the paperwork with the architects, it was determined that we needed to mark the space as used, so that's what we're attempting to do.
All right.
So, the previous use was storage, so is there a new storage area, or has the storage been reduced in favor of...
It was really, I mean, you could maybe speak to this better, but whenever I'm in that store, it's not really storage in the sense of that's where items are stocked or anything. It was when we built the store, we didn't need that space. We marked it as storage. There's a couple chairs and maybe like a poster there.
Some bins.
Yeah, some bins. Nothing actually being used for.
And so, and that area is just gonna be for employees only? There's no...
Correct.
Classes or something?
Nope.
Expansion like that? Okay.
The only question we really had, so if you, you are confirming that your FAR is gonna remain at .75, do you know if anybody calculated that for you?
I know that there were emails between the expediter and, if I could just pull up my phone real quick.
Who is it?
Bianca?
Yeah. We just got this.
Hi. Yeah, so I know you two were going back and forth a little bit, discussing the issue. So, the last thing I had just was a confirmation from Tim with the FAR plans and zoning statistics.
So, I think that our findings are, A, that they're not, that although they're using the space that's beyond the rear building line, that they are not increasing any parking non-conformity that that would require, that that would involve, because they have the same number of employees, or they're just refinishing that space.
Right.
And that their FAR is still under, is still compliant under the double asterisk.
Which question? Is it 1.61 or .75? What was...
1.61 would be their ma. It would, well, .75 is what we just got.
Right.
In, in the sheet.
So, they confirmed it was .75.
They're confirming the .75 and 1.61, as I understand it, is the max that they could do under the double asterisk. Am I wrong?
No, that wouldn't make any sense, because it's .9.
It's .9?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what's the 1.61?
That was what they, what they had provided on their FAR plans, but then the zoning statistics sheet indicated that it was .75.
Okay.
So, it seemed like it was probably, maybe, a mistake or something.
Yeah, yeah, we...
It was a mistake. Okay. So, we should verify, so we're verifying, we're confirming that it's .75?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the public? No public? Okay. And with that, if there are no other questions, Mr. McRae, could I have a motion?
I know, I remember this. So, nobody can turn on the mic if somebody else has the mic on. Nobody's on. Just, just Nick, when Nick...
Okay, let me see. The application, PLZ, PLPZ 2019-00040 for a final site plan at 22, excuse me, 356 Greenwich Avenue by 22 Elm Place Company. Motion to, whereas the FAR, as provided, is not changing, will remain at .75, whereas there'll be no change to the parking demand. The alterations to the lower level of the building would be for backup house use and staff use only. The employee count will be made approximately the same, and there are only four...
Could you, could we ask you to provide the employee count? Sorry.
The current employee count is 82.
And, but that's... Just so we have it. Right, but I mean, seasonal, at Christmas, you have more, right?
Yes, we added about three additional folks at Christmas last year.
Whereas the employee count will have been changed at approximately 82 with seasonal Motion to approve the application, as noted.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I think Yaski's got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get Don Conway to turn it off?
This is our... Okay. Our next step, so you're done?
Thank you.
You're approved, you're done? Okay. Paul and Francine Tremontano, application, this is our second application for a coastal final, a final coastal site plan at 204 Otter Rock. Hello, Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to mention, before we get started, that in contrast to Apple, the Hegney office and the DeAndrea office, we make our employees stand up, eat lunch, we have three minutes apiece, we have no couches, and we don't have a water fountain.
So, they quit and gone to Apple's, huh?
So, they go to Apple for lunch. We're here tonight representing Paul and Francine Tremontano, who are the owners of a parcel of land at the intersection of Otter Rock and Meadowwood. It was the subject of a subdivision back in 2017, and it was extended by Mr. Hegney for the prior owner back in January of 2018. We are presenting a site plan, a coastal site plan, which is here before the commission, in spite of the fact that it is far removed from the water, because it was a condition of the original subdivision. It's a single-family home. It meets all the requirements for setback, FAR, in fact, we're under on FAR, and we're under on green, or over on green area. We have a positive review by DPW. Sewer has typical comments of no discharge of air conditioning, condensate, et cetera. And those things will be resolved in the final permit for the new home, which will be applied for shortly, I hope. In addition, the commission recommended the approval that we utilize permeable pavement wherever possible, and limit the amount of impervious surfaces around terraces and patios, et cetera. To that end, we have a driveway designed with permeable pavers in two locations. One location, we have pavers, in the other location, we have porous asphalt. The DPW has reviewed the proposal and agreed that we can make a couple of minor revisions during the final building permit stage. One of them is so simple, in the area of the driveway in front of the garage, we provided permeable pavement and crushed stone to allow the water to move easterly toward the reservoir. Scott decided he didn't like that. He wanted us to make the reservoir a little wider. So, that's a simple change that we'll make in the final design. Another condition was that we had one driveway per lot. At the time of the conceptual approval, you remember, we had a driveway going in and out across the lot. The new driveway now has our access in from Otter Rock to a front courtyard, wraparound to a side garage. All of the drainage is directed to existing systems on Otter Rock, which, as we all know, is private. We do have a comment from conservation staff, which suggested that we have too much material on the property. I would refer the commission members back to the original comments from the environmental analyst Alexandra Mock dated October 12, 2017, wherein she commented that the existing topography is favorable for development, and this proposed smoothing out of the front yards will result in more stormwater runoff and less stormwater infiltration and retention in the ground. So, she basically said that the topography is favorable, filling will allow us to infiltrate water and slow it down.
No, it's less, it's, no, no, it's less. The proposed smoothing will result in more runoff and less infiltration. She still has the same concern...
Well, we're, yes.
This time around. She's saying the exact same thing, that that's one of the issues she has. The micro depressions of the existing front yard promote slower stormwater runoff and greater infiltration. That's the present situation. Smoothing the grades, she says, is gonna create greater runoff. So, she's got the exact same concern this time. And while I, while you took a breath...
Mm-hmm.
And I jumped right in.
Mm-hmm.
The both, the DPW concern, and it reflects what, what happened when we did the subdivision, is that there's more impervious. So, there, there's, there's a couple of different issues. One is the regrading, and the other one is the fact that you're coming in with a lot more, with significantly more impervious than you did originally. And that the reason that you're here is, I understand it from our transcript of the, of the approval of the subdivision, was the concern about the amount of impervious.
Okay. So, to point that, to respond to that, we have...
So, two questions?
Yes.
Double question. Okay, go. Go ahead.
Those were two questions.
Those were two questions. One was the grading and the other, just 'cause...
So, the, the response to that is that if you recognize the topography that's there, it's elevated and sloping down steeply toward the cone-shaped nose of the lot.
Right.
We had two choices. We could either drop the material significantly...
Right.
...by cutting and building two walls, which we find to be disruptive to the site and destructive of the natural soils. So, by building the house on the platform and not smoothing the soil, but utilizing the depths of the material that we're bringing in, we are able to slow down the water, filter it through our dry permeable pavers, and then let it dissipate horizontally and vertically through the soil. The soils here are typically tight, meaning slow percolation. So, having the volume that we provide to allow the water to infiltrate and move laterally as well as vertically, that's a good plan. The other response to you was...
So, you're saying is you can't, you don't see a feasible way of reducing cut and fill?
Actually, if you study our plan, we've done a cut and fill analysis, and we've demonstrated here that we actually have a net fill of only 100 yards. So, we're utilizing the material that we generate through the excavation of the foundation. And then by reducing the amount of dirt removed from the house by, and I'll tell you how we did that. We only have one wall across the property line. On the conceptual plan and this original subdivision proposal, there were two walls that are required dropping down significantly and producing more material. So, we're using the material generated here to create the grading down, one driveway. This is basically lifting up to the house so that we don't have to cut down and destroy the periphery of the property.
I think that what Mr. Maitland was looking for when we did this subdivision, and he talked about having the single driveway...
Yes.
I don't think that he meant have a single cut and then turn it into two driveways once you were on the site. I mean, that looks like two driveways once you're on the site. What he meant was a single driveway. That's how I remember it, anyway.
This doesn't...
So, the intent of the commission, and this is what, we did this, correct me, Katie, if you remember, but as we were discussing this item, he came up with this idea to address the neighbor concerns, and that we would go to the single driveway. You, your increase in the impervious is in opposition to what Mr. Maitland was trying to achieve at the time.
If you look at the staff comments, you'll notice that we have a significant increase in, in green area. So, we're at 77 percent, where we're only required to have 72 percent. So, that's a significant...
Yeah, I got that.
Observation.
I got that.
And the other thing is, if I may...
It's the 1680 to the 2376.
Again, Ms. Chairman, you're, we are totally compliant with the zoning criteria here, and the commission does not...
Not really with the condition of your subdivision. And you're, the condition of your subdivision was a single driveway, and I basically...
We have a single driveway.
You have a single driveway cut from which you have two driveways.
That's, that's incorrect.
No, there are two driveways there. I'm looking at them.
You have a, you have an entrance court and a approach to a garage. That's hardly two driveways.
Two driveways.
If you remember the conceptual approval...
You have, you have two ways along one, along which one can drive.
I don't think there's a house we've developed or designed a site for in the last five, 10 years that we haven't had a similar situation. Enter to a courtyard, swing around to a garage.
It wasn't a condition of any other subdivision approval. That was the condition of the subdivision approval, that you would have one driveway.
I disagree.
Is that the...
Conceptual plan had a driveway going through to both streets. That was offensive, apparently, to the neighborhood. The commission then agreed that we would have only one driveway. Pick your, pick your side, and we went to Otter Rock. Topographically, that's the appropriate way to go.
Got that.
You enter in, you rise up. If you notice, the entry to the garage area is only about a foot difference from existing elevation. So, again, it's an indication of how you have to accommodate this unique topography, which does drop off steeply.
But the bottom line is that you have a significant increase in the impervious surface versus what was, what was approved, what was discussed, and what Mr. Maitland was trying to achieve at the time. Oh.
If you'll take some public comment?
Not just yet, but okay, if the applicant will allow you to do that.
This was a very contested subdivision.
I know it was.
The Bellhaven Land Company took a, an appeal. We have a 10-page agreement that has been recorded on the land records between the subdivider and, the then-owner of this lot, and the Bellhaven Land Company. It was never the issue of impervious coverage. It all had to do with curb cuts, and how many curb cuts there were. And in fact...
Do you have that agreement?
The Bellhaven Land Company was...
That agreement? I'd like to see what that says and what it talks about, because...
Actually, I wasn't coming to present this this evening. It is, it is a recorded document.
Can the applicant get us that agreement? I'd like to see it, because what I recall of the discussion and what I saw in, in the summary of what we did the last time was different. We're all doing it from memory. If you have an agreement, if you have something that has been settled, I think that would create a great deal of comfort. What was said about impervious surface, what the total was agreed to, if you could do that, Mr. DeAndrea, then I would be...
Actually, it was Ms. Clawberg's firm that represented the Bellhaven Land Company, and the fact that she's here representing this particular owner, I think, is, is a statement in itself, that the Bellhaven Land Company does not have an issue with this. But it was all about the curb cuts, how many curb cuts...
Okay.
And where they are. It had nothing to do with impervious coverage...
I hear the representation...
Or driveways within the property itself.
I'd like to see the facts, because what we've got, what I'm looking at here is that DPW is raising the question about the impervious.
I'd also like to see the agreement, because as I remember this, the neighbors had a problem with traffic safety coming around this bend and landscaping.
And, and that was something that we did have a traffic engineer review and approve, and provided a report to the land company on that issue.
And did you give us that landscaping that for the, I guess this is it now, this is landscaping for the open spaces?
No, this is the, this is the conceptual...
So, have you given us the landscaping for the open space that was agreed to at the time that Mr. Yaski's referring to?
That was done at the time the subdivision was approved.
You guys have that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But really, the, the agreement itself has nothing to do with this application itself. I'm just giving you the background information on why this plan is now acceptable to Bellhaven.
Yeah, I remember the neighbors getting up there and arguing that it was a, a safety problem, that corner.
We have, we prepared a sightline plan.
Okay.
Ms. Clawberg, a quick question. The agreement that has been struck with the, the club and the property owner, does it reflect this design that's here before us in terms of where the curb cut is supposed to be? And is that, that this location part of that agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody could answer that?
We had to present the sightline plan to, for our owner to be able to close.
Okay.
And that was reviewed as part of that agreement that Mr. Hegney referred to.
Okay, so the curb cut, as we see tonight, is included in the agreement and has been approved by the club?
To best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else in the agreement about the driveway, driveways interior of the curb cut?
No, nothing that I'm aware of, no. This is a typical site plan. The only issue that we were advised was of contention was the location of the driveway, having one driveway instead of the through cut that was presented on the conceptual plan. We agreed to that condition, obviously, and everyone signed the agreement. I was not privy to the agreement, as Mr. Hegney pointed out, the two attorneys took care of that.
Okay.
We provided a plan that reduces the amount of excavation on the site. We have a net zero for all intents and purposes on cut and fill. We satisfied all of the drainage requirements from the drainage manual. This is a typical plan, and minimizes the amount of earthwork and satisfies all of the drainage criteria. There is an extensive planting plan that was presented to staff as part of the plan for the development of this coastal review.
Okay. Quick question. The, the driveway as proposed, it splits at the curb, just inside the curb cut, into two directions. Could it actually split farther in, and instead of coming into the center of the parking court, in the center of the, the building?
Lay it out, give it to the side.
We studied those different aspects, and as you can see, there is an elevation differential that we had to make. We also have to comply with our 4% of the mouth for 20 feet, 25 feet.
Right.
And then lift up to get to those. And as you look at the plan closely, you'll see that in the area in front of the garage, we're basically hitting existing grade, which is to our credit.
Right.
Courtyard is raised up in front, so that it gives a presence and a, a presence to the front door, and also enables us to get to the front door, which is a function of not cutting down all of the existing topography. So, softening the front, down from the parking court in the front, which gives the entrance, if you will, to the prominent location of the house, and hiding the garage, which is typical of a good design...
Right.
Is something that this client prefers.
Okay, so this, the, the grade and the elevation is actually, as proposed, basically a compliant with actually the, the proper slope given for the highway, man, highway made for the, for the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, I was thinking going in that direction, but it'd be too steep.
Be steeper from the other side.
Yeah.
Is there a landscaping plan on, on this site?
Yes.
Did anybody else get it? Change your... Do you have one?
Nick, did you get the landscaping plan?
Uh, no, I don't think we have it.
No, we don't think we have it. Did you send it to us, Mr. DeAndrea?
There's no notes in the staff either about it. This is a...
The plan is prepared by a firm called Tremontano &amp; Row. In the interest of full disclosure, Tremontano is the uncle of the owner. He's been in business for a long time, and this is the landscape plan that they've determined is appropriate. Softens the appearance of the wall along the back property line and along the street. There's a screening around the courtyard, and then there's peripheral parking, planting along the Meadowwood roadside to screen the, the development. The pool is hidden behind the home. It's cut down. And to show how we've eliminated or minimized the amount of earthwork, we're utilizing the backside of the pool house with some ring walls as retaining walls, and they function as sitting walls, so that we don't have to cut on that northern side. So, again, utilizing the topography, minimizing the excavation. For example, the pool would be set at 39, the adjacent grade is at 38. The garage is set at 38.6, and the ground in front is at 39. So, we're putting the house on the site with minimizing the amount of excavation. And then to carry the court up to the front to give it, you know, an entrance, we have to slope down on the outside, because it is a unique topographic condition that we've addressed very carefully.
Is that part of the Bellhaven agreement, the landscaping plan that you just submitted? I would think it would be. I mean, I think that was one of their...
I don't know.
So, you would really help us if we could see that, 'cause as I'm looking at this, it again says, it says the commission was concerned with the amount of blacktop and impervious areas, and restricted the lot to only one driveway. So, the way this is written, our staff report says that it's the impervious area. I would really like to, I, I hear you, Mr. DeAndrea, but it's not a thing of, I, I respect your opinion. I respect Mr. Hegney's opinion, what you've added, but I'd like to have the facts rather than people reporting them.
Okay. If I had ever, ever thought that the commission would be considered concerned about a private agreement, we would have presented it had we known. I don't think that was appropriate. Also, by what standard are you gauging the amount of impervious on a site? If we're compliant with the green area criteria, then I don't know how you can apply arbitrarily a coverage condition.
Because, Mr. DeAndrea, at the time that the subdivision was approved, the commission expressed these concerns and put them in the subdivision approval and wrote about them. So, it is a function of how the subdivision was approved, and what we're trying to do is just establish that this proposal is consistent with the subdivision approval as it was made. That's all we're trying to do. We are not trying to create new rules or anything like that, just that this happens to be a subdivision approval, that we want to go back and see that it was consistent. We've requested a full transcript of our own approval, because we didn't have it in time.
Well, again, I'll just...
So, the first...
Express concern that we...
I hear you.
Can arbitrarily decide on any given proposal what the number should be. I don't think that's what this commission is permitted to do.
No, that is not what we're doing. We are looking for consistency with the subdivision approval.
Which has, which has no standard applied.
The applicant agreed to the subdivision approval, and therefore, it stands.
Okay. Then I would say that I would just go on, since there is no record, or maybe there is a record, that the fact that we have met and exceeded the green area, which is in the applicable zoning criteria for this particular lot, I think it's, should be noted.
I hear you. Okay. So, if you would give us whatever information you have to confirm that you are, that this is in compliance with, with the conditions of your subdivision approval, and I think that what we're gonna need to do is, we only have a summary of the transcript prior to tonight. I only, we only saw a summary of what was in the transcript. I think the commission's gonna have to look at the transcript, what was discussed at the subdivision approval, so we can decide.
Yeah, that, I was just gonna suggest that if you could go through the tape, the transcript, whatever's available, and just pull out the pertinent points and show, I think, was all Ben saying, just show that it's not in conflict.
Consistent. We're not trying to make, we're not trying to make new rules for you here. We're just saying, hey, this subdivision approval was a difficult one. That's why you're here now, and let's just make sure that it's all... you're here now. And let's just make sure that it's all consistent and you're good. Anybody have any other comments?
So one question is the sightlines and whatever, it was going around that corner and the traffic issues. I think Mr. Yaski was about to ask this question. Was that, was that included in the, in the agreement? In other words, has someone looked at the landscaping plan vis-à-vis the traffic issue and the sightline issue?
Melissa will provide you a copy of the, of the agreement that Mr. Hegney and Melissa's firm agreed to or developed, all right? We presented a sightline plan for negotiation purposes prior to my client agreeing to purchase the property. That was our first effort on this design. So we developed the concept. We produced the driveway. We showed the sightlines. We presented it. It was part of the agreement to the best of my knowledge. And then we were told we were permitted to proceed.
Mr. DeAndrea, before you sit down, I'll just question the chair one. In what format do you want the, the numbers of this information that we're looking for?
What I'd like is this agreement that was reached.
Yeah, we're getting that.
And then I think what Katie said, I actually think it behooves us to look at our own transcript because I'm looking at what the decision letter says, whereas the blacktop and impervious surfaces shall be limited during development of the lots. So we said that in the decision letter. And that's what, that's the question we need to answer because versus what was before us at the time of the subdivision, there's significantly more impervious. So...
Do you want a comparison of this as the conceptual plan to what's being provided?
No, because that conceptual plan wasn't what was approved.
The conceptual plan was in fact a concept. The commission decided that we should have one driveway entrance, not a through, not a through driveway.
This is not what the commission approved because during the meeting, Richard changed this and got rid of this. But in exchange, whereas you see here how this one driveway was going to, what he took out was this, but he was thinking it would be one driveway. Instead, you now have this. So they flipped the cars to, so that it splits.
Okay. Do you want a comparison of what the subdivision represented and now?
So this would be, yeah. But yeah, what the actual subdivision, this is wrong because this isn't what we approved.
So in a sense, actually, the conceptual plan of the approved subdivision.
Yes.
In comparison to what's actually being proposed.
I'm not sure that they ever actually...
We did not, we did not submit another plan.
Right.
The commission ultimately approved the subdivision with the condition that we have one driveway, not a through driveway. We then, they then went into negotiations on settlement that the attorneys resolved. So we don't need to have any more of the public input.
So the thing about it is, Mr. DeAndrea, what, what would help is to understand exactly, since I'm not an architect, what gave rise to the increase in the impervious surface? Because it's very clear from the letter that that's what we're trying to work away from.
The problem you have...
And what we did is we got more than what was in the subdivision.
The problem you have, I believe, is that you believe there's an increase in, in impervious, but you have no standard by which to judge that. You did not set any standard, nor should you, as a commission, be setting a standard for that other than what you've adopted in the zoning regulations, which are green area. We've met that and exceeded it significantly.
So, Mr. DeAndrea, at the time, the design submitted during the subdivision had approximately 1,680 square feet of driveway. The proposal submittal has 2,376 feet of driveway. I read the decision letter, and it says the commission was concerned about the impervious at the time and asked that it be limited. And it's come in significantly higher. So why is it higher? And can that be changed?
Higher than...
And again, we're not changing the regulations on you. We are making sure that you are complying with the intent of the decision letter as it is spelled out on the subdivision. We are staying with the letter of the law on this. Am I good, Victoria, on that?
Oh, let's, I think, you don't need to answer that.
Okay, don't answer that. Okay. Thank you, sir. I don't think we have any public comment on this application?
No, all the public comment was resolved in the agreement.
Okay. Well, we see the agreement. We'll be good.
Can you pass that? We have to keep that map actually now that it's...
Thank you. That's the original one that Richard didn't like.
Yeah.
Okay. So our next application is Morris and Arlene Gofar with a final subdivision to transfer 2.3 acres of land from 576 Round Hill Road to 566 Round Hill Road. Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the agency. Larry Liebman, representing the applicant. There was two questions from the zoning enforcement officer, and that was the FAR question and the A2 question. I have the letters that the architect prepared, that the FAR both lots will be...
Please, please pass it down to Katie.
For 566 Round Hill, the freestanding garage is going to be removed. And the total FAR in it, in the proposed buildings, is 21,209 square feet, and the total allowable is 28,167. For 576, it is a single-story house. The existing caretaker's cottage is going to be removed. It's 508, 5,875 square feet. We're allowed 7,240. As far as the A2 survey, I have one here that I have not prepared. I was having equipment problems in the office, but the A2 survey...
Feel your pain.
Pardon?
Feel your pain. We have equipment problems here.
Okay. The 566 Round Hill is going to become a 10-acre parcel, 10-plus acre parcel, which, and the other lot is going to become a four-acre parcel in the four-acre zone. And the lots are all conforming. There is no, there's not going to be anything that's non-conforming. As a matter of fact, what I have done is this existing garage that was Mr. Prey's residence is only 74,31 square, feet to the Round Hill Road, but I'm making that the street-side yard, so it's a little bit less, and making the sum the road. It's just lot lines. Everything's going to be, but it'll make the lot conforming.
We're changing the...
And, and that's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Well, it appeared to be at the cemetery there because the property is not...
Cemetery is over here and is not included.
Right. But I'm just saying that it's just odd because you have a, that's a corner lot, the cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't say, no, it's a street side. This also, then this becomes the front here on Sumner Road. This becomes the front on this lot, and this becomes a street-side yard.
Have you spoken to Mr. Kucher about that?
I will sit with him. But right now, the existing setback from the existing residence, which was Mr. Prey's house, is 74,31. So that and the front yard setback in the four-acre zone is 75.
So if you didn't get the change, it would be a legal nonconformity?
Correct.
So what we could do...
Either way, doesn't matter. But I do think...
But the problem is we can't condition it.
Correct.
So, yeah, would you, Mr.?
Well, no, it's not so much that is, is, because he's, what are you going to, is this the map you're planning to file?
Yes, with some other modifications to make it right.
Why don't we just leave it at Round Hill and, and just leave it, leave it as, and just have a legal nonconformity?
That's fine, too. If that's, if that's...
But I think that's what I said, whatever, whatever, Mr. Kucher, if you want to put it on, on him, just to do with the cemetery issue.
But we, it's a, we can't condition the, we can't condition it because it's a...
Yeah, you can. What's, what's noted on the plan, you sure, sure you can?
Okay, so that we could do it like that. Okay.
So in other words, you should talk to him. How does he want you to?
If he wants it to, if he wants it to be an existing nonconforming, we can do that, and that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
I mean, it really, at this point, it's, it's six and one and a half. It doesn't...
I mean, yeah, I mean, I just don't, we just don't want to say one way or another about the cemetery without him opining on it, is the point.
Yeah, no, he, he did ask about the, I mean, he's looked at it. He's asked, he only commented on the FAR, but what the heck, might as well.
Well, he doesn't know that he was changing the...
Yeah. So why don't we get him to take a look at it?
I don't understand why that would even matter.
Because the cemetery is not owned by the big parcel, is it?
No, it's not. The cemetery is...
So that's the corner lot.
So there's a piece of land that...
I didn't call this a corner lot, though. I said that this was a street. Oh, I get you. I got you. That's fine. I got it. The light went on. I'm sorry. Perfectly fine. I can meet with him regardless what, how it gets written. It's just really what we want to do.
How do you want to say this?
Katie, how should, how do we...
Put it on to there.
I think you just say that prior to the filing of the map, the confirmation...
The applicant shall meet with the, shall get confirmation from the zoning enforcement officer as to whether this lot is a corner lot and the street and the frontage can be changed to something.
Right. And the most important thing is that the yard, whichever one is the appropriate one, gets properly noted on the plan.
Not, not, I don't have any objection to that. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments other than that? Any comments from the public? Okay. All right. So with that, anybody else? No, we're good. Okay. So, Mr. McQuire, may I have a motion?
The application, PLPZ 2019 0090, for final subdivision, transfer 2.314 acres of land from 576 Round Hill, which is to 566 Round Hill Road, whereas an issue of FAR for the existing residences to remain at 566 and 576 have been resolved through a letter dated April 16, 2009 from Kenneth Nadler Consulting Architects. The numbers actually work and will be, actually work and are represented on drawings included in the letter. Prior to the filing of the map, the applicant is to meet with the zoning enforcement officer to confirm the side yard, front yard setbacks and yards as represented in, in condition of a possible corner lot issue. Let's see. And I find that actually a motion to find that this is not a subdivision or a re-subdivision.
And that it should be properly noted, whichever the finding is.
Yeah, okay. That the finding with the CEO and the applicant is to be noted on the site plan map, to be, the, to be filed, site plan map. Anything else?
I'm good. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Our next application is Calabrese Property Association and Mariano Lozano for a final subdivision, requesting clarification regarding the language in the declaration of restrictions for the open spaces, 16 Lakeview and 0 Lakeview Drive. This one is yours. Mr. Hegney?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Now you're no longer a member of the public.
I'm still a member of the public. I'm just here representing the owner of this property. As you indicated, this is a application of a subdivision. We weren't quite sure how to handle this because we're looking to amend the, the language or to clarify it in the declaration of restrictions that was recorded when the subdivision was approved in 2006. The, maybe it might be helpful if I show you. My client owns one of the five lots in the subdivision, and it backs up to the open space parcel, which is between their property and the Myanis Pond. And last year, they were looking to put a dock on the pond and went to the, we're told that they had to get a dock license from the, for a selectman. And it has to be approved by the board of selectmen. So they...
I'm not because everybody's telling us that that's not the right way to have gone about it.
And, you know, I've been thinking about this. And I think this...
No, no, hold on a second. Do I have, I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney, I have it wrong?
Yeah, that part is fine. But what went wrong is they didn't get the wetland or PG approval. So because it's...
And so...
So here you are.
If you're not familiar with how our diffused form of government actually functions, which probably includes most of the people in town, I, I think this is an example of, improvements that can be made to the procedure. Because you would think that the last thing you would need before you actually start construction is an actual document signed by Peter Tessia's first selectman of the town of Greenwich.
Well, we had 15 people.
But that was the first thing they got and thought, well, now we have to be able to get to our dock, which is on the Myanis Pond. There's a 25 or 27-foot change in elevation from our westerly property line to the pond. And how are we going to get down there safely? And the other property owners in, in the subdivision also want to be able to use this dock and be able to access it. And they have the right to do that. So this is the actual subdivision itself that was approved back in 2006.
Mr. Hegney, they have the right to use the dock via the license agreement, or what makes them have that, or just...
Because they're all owners of the open space parcel.
So the open space parcel got the approval to get the dock?
No, actually, it was my clients that own the lot, abutting the open space parcel, that got the dock approval. But they have talked to their neighbors and they...
Through the open space.
Through the open space, right.
So what's going to happen 10 years from now when we have a new owner of this property and they have an argument with the other four lot owners? Only two of those lots have access to the water. We just had one of these a week ago where the, on shore, shore... Excuse me.
As part, as part of the subdivision, there is a requirement that all lots have access to the open space parcels. And that, that's actually been part of the subdivision regulations since they were adopted in 1970.
Right. So that part's not in dispute. And that's the reason why every property owner in the subdivision got a letter of violation, not just the, not just the person who has docked. But the, I mean, it's almost a moot point, although you're trying to make the connection. But what makes, what makes all of those property owners have access to the dock? What legal entity? Is it just, is it just...
It's the note on the subdivision map that says that they have an easement over my client's property to be able to get to the open space parcel.
No, it's not, right. I'm not arguing the open space parcel. I'm questioning the dock itself. Because you, you made the comment that all the property owners have legal access to the dock. And I'm asking, what is legal access?
No, they have legal access to the open space parcel.
Right.
And my client has talked to them all about using the dock as a community asset. And although my client is the one that purchased the dock, all the people in the subdivision would have the opportunity to use it.
Through what legal mechanism? Is there, is there a written document that grants...
No, there is no written document at this point. But that's something that we will work out with the other property owners as, as part of this, if we can get to the point of getting from my client's property to the, to the pond, which, for the most part, they worked with the topography of the site. This is a map that Mr. Liebman prepared, which shows where the existing stepping stones and, and stairs are, and also shows the additional landscaping that's been proposed as part of it. I have a few photos that I wanted to show you. This is not on the, on the open space parcel itself. The stairs that are in the middle of the picture are actually on my client's property. It's the stepping stones themselves that are in the open space. And this is another view looking south of those stepping stones. This is a set of stairs with a two-foot wall that has been constructed as part of being, as part of gaining access to the pond. And then these are the set of stairs that go down following the topography to the dock itself. So maybe it had been a leap of faith that my client had that if he had a permit to put in a dock, he had to have the ability to get to it. And that's the steps that he took. Came to the attention of the wetland agency and then the plan... of the wetland agency and then the planning and zoning staff, which resulted in an application to the wetland agency, which is pending. And the wetland agency said, well, before we consider your application, we want to make sure that you can actually have these stairs as part of it. So I had a conversation with the staff regarding what was appropriate in terms of the language of the open space parcel. And my thought was that, given the, the, the lack of, the need for a building permit, because there's no retaining wall that's over three feet high, so there's no obligation to get a building permit for that, and the fact that they were working with the topography of the site to get from their property down to the water, that it would work within the language that the declaration currently has. I didn't want to take the chance that the commission might look at that and say, no, we don't agree with that. So I've included as an alternative, a language that would permit the installation of the stairs and dock in order to be able to actually utilize the open space parcel to access the, the dock at the pond. One, one thing I wanted to talk about was the subdivision regulations, which were adopted in 1970, have a section, Division 8, Section 6-297, which is entitled Parks and Playgrounds and Standards. Although we now talk about it just in terms of open space, there is the tacit understanding that there would be some type of passive use of the open space parcels. And providing for stairs and stepping stones so that you have the ability to utilize a very wonderful asset that is there, which is the Myanis Pond, is, is necessary. Otherwise, you sort of can't get here from there. There must be, where those stairs are, about a 15-foot drop from the, from the elevated portion down to the pond itself. So we're looking for you not to approve this tonight, but to say that you do not object to us proceeding with the wetland application so that we can obtain that, because I need to obtain that before I can come back to you and ask you to vote on an application that's pending, because we need to have, under statute, the wetland agency approve it first. So it's, it's a bit of chicken and egg. But the, the thought was that we would come in with a subdivision application, so to speak, to be able to modify-
Gotcha.
-the language.
Gotcha. Mr., anybody got comments?
Are there any?
No. They're all in favor of being able to do this. There is no formal association at this point. I've talked to my client about that. He has talked to his neighbors about it. They do it informally for the driveway, which is also part of the, the common area, that they all participate in plowing and maintaining that.
Can you put the mic on? Sorry, I know it's-
Oh, it's because you can, only one person can talk at a time. It's like in our meetings.
That's actually a really good idea, isn't it?
It doesn't work for us. Can you ask a question again?
Yeah. Amongst the association members, is there, will there be any agreement on who maintains the dock, who has responsibility, who ensures it?
Yes, that, that will all be part of a, an agreement for them all to be able to utilize it. And that's something that my client has spoken to the other property owners about who they're in agreement with.
So the, can you go back to the first picture that you had up there that showed the stairs up at the top? Because it appears that it goes through two private properties. Is that correct?
Yes. The, the initial portion of the stairs are on the property to the south, and then the lower portion is on my client's property on the north.
And who owns the property to the south?
That's another member of the subdivision.
So in reality, as-
That's number 14.
As you had indicated before, your, your client is providing access to the pathway over their lot down to the dock. But that map actually has the top of the stair on the property owners to the south.
Right.
So you have to go across their property.
You have to come down my client's property, go on to the property at 14, and then back across my client's property to get down to the open space parcel.
Okay. Is there an agreement between the two property owners to provide cross easements of access?
Yes, that's part of the overall subdivision for them to be able to, all members of the subdivision access it.
Let's start with the dock license agreement. I have it in front of me. It's signed by both the selectman and, I guess, the property owner. But I believe it's, yeah, actually page one of the document. It's looking for a plan, and the plan is not enumerated. Right below that, in two, two other paragraphs, it says, "The owner's construction and use of the dock be subject to the following conditions. Owner shall secure a permit from the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Agency." I'm not too sure how well he could miss that because it's signed at the top and signed at the bottom, and right in the middle where you're supposed to actually go to wetlands and get this done. It was just, it seems completely missed. And, and I think actually what I'm looking at here is a maya culpa application. I just kind of put it in, and now I'm here, oops, I gotta get this approved because I did it by mistake. I think the declaration of restrictions is actually very, very, very clear. Section 1A, no building or other structure or improvement. We're talking about structure that doesn't require a permit, but it's talking about an improvement. Clearly, this is an improvement because we've put in a stair, paving stones, and we're not going to get to talk of the dock because the dock's actually in the water, which is actually not even part of the park and playground.
It's town, town property, actually.
The second part, in B, no topographic changes shall be made in any portion of the open space area. Clearly, topographic changes have been made to put in the stairs, to put in, you know, maybe grade out a little bit for the, the-
When you go out there and walk it, it very much follows the contours of the property itself.
Can you get a picture of actually the lower, lower portion? Right, that one. Seems that the grade's kind of been pushed around a little bit to get that in there. And I would suspect that actually there's a little bit of digging to actually kind of get that in to sit straight.
It didn't appear that way when I was out there looking at it.
You had also, well, let's see, is that a silt fence?
Yes.
It seemed to me you put a silt fence up because you're regrading. You don't want the silt, the dirt to get into the water. You had talked about actually the park and playground and the old, the subdivision issues. The park and playground is, is the land. That's part of the subdivision. I don't believe there's any mention of the water, or having access to the water. It's actually access to this portion of the land as open space for the enjoyment of the property owners.
And in addition, if they had done, if they had wanted, if the open space had been set up to be a park and deeded as an open space, which is a park and has improvements on it as a park, it would be a totally different thing. This is not set up that way. It is set up to remain natural, and that's why the language is there.
Unimproved, no change.
Unimproved with no improvement, either temporary or permanent. So, shall be placed, so, go ahead. You're on this.
I agree with you, the structures issue. Yeah, it's not a structure because it's really low to the ground, but it's an improvement to me, which the deed of restriction says no.
Well, the, the reason that I submitted the alternative language to be included in an amendment to the regulations and what brings me here this evening-
That's part of the-
-is I wasn't necessarily here to argue about the point. I'm, I'm willing to concede that.
Okay.
But I think it's also important to be able to allow for some passive use, i.e. walking, from my client's property down to the pond owned by the town in order to be able to enjoy it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Really of you, Nick. Isn't this a matter within the association?
It's the open space agreement. We approve it. It's the open space agreement. We, open space.
I understand, but it would be how the neighbors, that would work amongst themselves.
The situation is that the open space is there actually as part of the approved subdivision is open space, not to be disturbed. Clearly, it's been disturbed. There's a structure in it. There's a structure leading down to something that actually is not questionable. It would be the same as if, if we said in an open space that you're not cutting trees down, and somebody actually starts to encroach and cut the trees down and disturb the open space. They wanted more backyard.
I believe Ms. Mock recommended switch back trails or something. She said that could be done.
That's pretty much what is there now.
Those are, those are steps with, with mortar in them.
Yeah, but you're, you're following along the contours of that.
I don't think that's what-
I don't think you can do it, given that you're-
Well, Mr. Hegney-
The last part drops about 15 feet, almost straight down-
Okay, Mr. Hegney.
-without putting in some kind of way to do it safely.
The bottom line is, in my mind, is that there's an agreement, and you violated the agreement.
Well, that's why I'm here to amend it.
Yeah.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission retains the authority within the document to amend it. And I think in this case, that's an appropriate thing to do.
The, actually, your application is not to amend it. From what I see here, it is to request clarification of the language. Therefore, you are not here to amend it. You're asking us to clarify it for you. And that's the homework that we've done for this hearing. We're clarifying it for you as we see it.
Mm-hmm.
Our clarification for you is that no improvement. That's what you're asking for. That's what's in this, in this, in this application description.
Well, I, I actually-
We're not asking to amend it here.
Actually, I did request that it be amended because I didn't want to end up here and have you say, no, we, we don't agree with your interpretation.
Yeah, we don't agree with your interpretation. Because it's in English.
And I, and I accept that. But I wanted to be able to also say, if, if you don't agree with my interpretation of the regulations, and that's fair enough, or the, the declaration, that we want to be able to amend it to include, in my narrative, installation of steps and stepping stones.
I think that would require us-
That should be permitted within the open space area to enable the access to the pond.
I think he's arguing the alternative. He's arguing A or B.
Right.
Well, but he's not before us for a modification. That's not what the application is. He wanted us to clarify it. That's if you read, if you read our agenda.
I was just reading my narrative. That's part of my application.
I think we, I think we have, we have clarified this. I think actually, it's quite clear to us to say that, yes, actually, this is not permitted in the open space.
And the dock is illegal. The other thing is, the way you've known, you've got the, the Calabrese Property Association, which I assume is the owner of the open space, right?
That's the title holder of the open space.
And then you have Lozano, who is one of the owners of the steps. And so where's the other owner? Because they're not kind of partying to this.
If necessary, I can certainly amend the application to include, include them as well.
Okay, so Mr. Hegney, we've got, one, the application in front of us, basically, I think we've clarified what this is, and it's an improvement in the open space, which is not, clearly not allowed. I guess it's your narrative that actually has the, the language which you'd like to propose.
Right, which is part of my application.
But it's not, it's not an official proposal. It's not coming in to actually taking the deed of restrictions as it is and submitting those for review and approval.
I said, should the commission conclude that the additional language, that additional language is necessary to permit the dock access, the following language is suggested.
Okay, but it's not included on a document, or the rest of, it's not included with the rest of the deed of restrictions. It's actually just the suggested language.
There's a legal-
Okay.
If you would like me to insert it into the declaration of restrictions, I can certainly do that, but-
No, that's really not the issue. This was created as open space, which was not to be violated. That's how it was set up. In my mind, if you're going to come in and change the open space agreement, you basically have to do a new subdivision or a new open space setup or something like that. Because this was created as a protection, and it was created to be kept natural, and those were the terms. And to change them just because your client felt like building a concrete flight of steps and putting in a dock and the neighbors talked to each other and nobody got a wetlands permit, so why don't we just say it's all okay after the fact? I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney, I feel very strongly about this.
That seems awfully punitive in approach.
Punitive, yeah. It is punitive because there was an agreement that was signed by the applicant, and there were terms that were given to the applicant.
By the prior owner of the property.
But it doesn't matter. It has to be respected. It was an agreement that was signed, and it was part of the property. It goes with the subdivision approval. And I'm not being punitive. I'm saying those are the facts of this subdivision approval.
So you have five property owners that would like to be able to access the pond, and-
Doesn't mean they can do whatever they want and ignore the conditions of approval.
Fair enough, but that's why we filed a wetland application. That's why Mr. Liebman prepared a planting plan that enhances the overall open space parcel with additional trees and shrubs.
My personal answer to the wetlands people would be to take a look at this as a violation of the open space terms. Sorry, that's what it is. That's the fact.
Well, and, and that's why I came to you, asking you to amend it.
And what the intent was, well-
Mr. Hegney, there's a, there's a large wooded area that goes beyond obviously your properties, your client's property here. I think one of the, one of the points of interest is how many properties go down to the water that are, because I know that there were previous subdivisions that do have fingers that go down to the water.
Yes.
And then some of them might have direct access to the water. But just from a built-out standpoint, so to speak, you know, people, people using this, this wooded area to get down to the water, I think would be-
If, yeah, if they want to do a different type of open space, if these people want to get together and they want to create a park and they want to redo the subdivision, it's one thing. But in, in my mind, coming in and requesting to retroactively correct violations of agreements and just pretend that they never existed is not in the best interest of our community. Our, we do the open space for a reason.
And I should note also that those two fingers, that's why I'm bringing it up, because I think that was what was contemplated previously when, in previous subdivisions, that there are these two fingers that go down to the water. So, you know, what you don't want to have is 15 access points down this steep slope.
Yeah.
And it's been contemplated already.
So bottom line, what I personally, and commissioners, please jump in if you disagree. I mean, my sense is that we should give wetlands some feedback on how we see the creation of the open space, what happens with the open space. We give our interpretation of this situation, and then we let, we start out with wetlands looking at it and then work from there. Because your first stop is wetlands. And what they say to you-
But they said my first stop had to be here.
Well, they're going to get feedback from us. We're going to be very clear how we're interpreting this. At least I am. What do you guys think? Nobody's, go ahead.
I think actually-
Yes, Keesky?
No, it's the same.
Say, but say it, because-
The hope, the hope-
Go ahead, let Dennis go with this.
It's a clear violation of the open space agreement that we're back to the neighbors and revise the open space agreement, or accept it the way it is.
And create a different type of agreement, one that, because we do provide, as you say, in the subdivision, you could. But for that, you begin with your wetlands, and then you figure out what your buffer area is going to be, what's going to be respectful of the natural environment. And once you've worked that out with wetlands, then you could come back and talk to us about a different kind of open space. But if we had everybody doing this, we wouldn't have open space left in town because people would be paving over it. Do I feel strongly about this? Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a couple, so there's, there's a two-pronged question. You've obviously gotten the answer to the first part. I think we're clear on that.
Yes, and, and that's fine.
Yeah, so then the second part of it is the bigger question. And I think, first of all, the planning of that whole area, I think, needs to be presented.
Right.
The, the fact that-
Come in with an open space plan.
Meaning that there are these two fingers that go down to the water. So why, is it, is it appropriate to have every one of these properties go down to the water? So that's one. Two, this-
I'm, I'm not following the fingers.
In other subdivisions, not in this subdivision.
Oh, okay.
I'm just talking about that whole area. Your open, the declaration that applies to this property is in perpetuity. So in order to change that, there has to be, there has to be something better than what's, in terms of the public good, than in terms of the subdivision regulations that's been offered already. already. So what is the enhancement? Why would the commission do that, in other words?
I think the enhancement here is you have five properties that are able to access the Myannis Pond as an amenity, which I think is an important part of encouraging people to use the environment.
But then what you have to do is create a plan...
But not if there's a better access to the water two steps down the road that doesn't involve a switchback.
And that doesn't involve violating open space. Open space sacred.
There's another little problem, though, that there's only two of the lots that actually touch the water, and the other three are going to have to trespass against the lots to get to the water.
But they'll have easements.
As part of the subdivision, there is an access, which has been part of the subdivision regulations since they were adopted in 1970, that all properties within a subdivision have to have access to the open space parcel. And you don't see it all that often because there aren't a lot of subdivisions that come in these days. But each lot owner, if they're not contiguous to that open space, has to have a pedestrian easement to be able to get from their property to the open space parcel.
That begs the other question, which is if this wasn't just done this way, was there or is there a better way for this access to have been provided that doesn't require going through the two people's property? I don't know the answer to that, but was this the best way to do it?
Given the topography of the site and the fact that these stairs are already there on lots for number 14 and number 16, I would say that this is, by and large, the best way to do it.
Mr. Hegney, so Mr. McRae just came up with a solution that I'm going to try out on you, which is this. Why don't you guys go back and talk to everybody who lives there and make a new open space area that equals the same total area as before, and the neighbors chip in what needs to be chipped in, and you keep those steps, but you have them be on somebody's private property, and you move the open space? And you don't violate the open space. You could do that. We're giving you some solutions. In other words, you can keep the stairs, but not in the open space. Okay? You have homework to do, Mr. Hegney.
Well, just, I'd like to make sure that it's something that's actually feasible to do, and I'm not sure...
Well, he was just trying to be helpful, and maybe it's not feasible, but...
As you see, it goes down through a section...
Right.
Through a good set, middle section of it.
Maybe somebody else would kindly contribute some open space in exchange for having access to the dock. I'm leaving you an idea.
These are small lots. I will certainly look at it, but I don't see that as a viable alternative.
Keep going back to the subdivision plan.
Could you...
Just end it.
End it, okay. We're done, Mr. Hegney. Look, we're done. We've given you the answer. We've told you. No improvements in the open space. No improvements in the open space. You want to propose a different type of open space with different agreements after you've been through wetlands and reviewed your buffer area and reviewed what wetlands is looking for, but we do not support improvements in the open space. And I'll give you an example, which I quoted yesterday in the briefing. We struggled mightily on the Mallard Drive subdivision because there wasn't room for the rain garden anywhere, and we finally let them put the rain garden in the open space, and it killed us. So watching that flight of steps go in there is just not a happening thing. So that's the only precedent I can think of, of somebody coming in and saying, "I want to do an improvement in the open space," and us finally agreeing to it. Mallard Drive and Swan Court or Swan Place, you remember it. It's the only one I remember.
I do. Mr. DeAndrea asked me to get involved in that, even though it was a good plan.
So what is the application you have for the property agency?
So, time to go.
It's to put in the plantings that we show here and maintain the stairs as they are.
So I think you're going to take an action this evening, right?
Well, I think we're going to have to... How do we take an action? The commission hereby clarifies that there is no...
No, they've submitted as a subdivision.
No.
Denied.
Yeah, you would need to take an action on the subdivision.
Denied.
And you can make your points as you do that to talk about why you're not willing to amend the subdivision, the declaration as part of the subdivision. So you'd be taking an action on the subdivision.
Okay. So I think... I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney, but it's just so, so clear. Our precedent, our history on this is clear, and this is something that's important to the community. Okay, you're done.
I actually don't see it that way, but thank you.
I know. You're done.
Do we want to give... Okay. I just want to make sure that we're kind of clear on this, that actually...
Wait, I haven't asked for members of the public.
No, no, no. I have questions.
You have questions?
Before Mr. Hegney leaves, I want to make sure that we've got this clarified.
Okay, all right. Mr. McRae, I would like you to stay there.
So we've clarified, actually, that the language is very clear in the declaration of restrictions, that no topography is to be changed, and that there should be no improvements.
No improvements, either temporary or permanent. In addition, we note that dock is illegal.
Hold on a second. And that the dock, although approved by the selectmen, actually was not approved by wetlands.
As it should have been.
Okay. So in a sense, actually, the dock needs to be approved properly by both the selectmen and wetlands.
And I think planning and zoning, actually, is in that...
Katie thinks it's in there. Nick only found... I didn't remember what it said, but...
You have it in the...
The approval by...
The approval by the selectmen?
Hold on a second.
Of course, just to respond to Mr. McRae's comment, that's why I included an alternative to amend the language, which is within the commission's ability to do, to allow these five property owners the ability to get down to the Myannis Pond.
Mr. Doolook, I don't think I see...
Oh, no, you're right. It's just...
Okay. Okay, I think actually, if we're... So the approval for wetlands, because it all basically comes down to the dock. If you didn't have the dock, you wouldn't need steps to get down to the water, and we'd all moot point.
I think our finding is even more than that we find it is inconsistent with the agreement. I think that we further find that the steps should be removed and the land restored, and the land restored to the natural state unless the applicant develops an alternative open space plan. So we give them the ability to come in with something workable. Go ahead.
The thing is, if that's... Then, does Mr. Hegney, do you want to leave it open? Because, as I say, it's a two-pronged question. We solved on the first one, but if there's options potentially, I mean, are they going to be within, close enough to this application that you'd be willing to do it under this application? Or would it be a new application?
I'd like to see a new application. Because they may revise the open space. To me, they need to come in with something completely different because they might revise the open space.
Yeah, I think it would have to be revised because I think actually what's going to really happen is that we come in with the new... It would come back with a new dock that's been approved. We come back with an approval by wetlands. It would come back with a revised declaration of restrictions. There would be another map has to be filed with the easements and the revised open space, the proper easements for access to the top of the stair if it still remains. There would be a lot more to resolve other than this, actually, the new language actually in the deed as a document, because then that's the thing that actually would be proposed.
I... That's a Scribner issue.
Right.
If you deny it, then wetlands cannot approve my application that I have pending with them for Monday night. So I'm no farther along than I would be. If you continue it, it gives me at least the ability to have a discussion with wetlands as to the appropriateness of maintaining what's there.
I just want wetlands to be very clear where we stand on it.
Right. I mean, I guess the question for you, though, Mr. Hegney, is what are you willing... What options do you have to give the commission a good feeling that it's worth keeping it open?
It's something I would have to review with my client, Mr. Liebman, and see what we can come up with. I don't have a particular suggestion at this point. I thought the one that I was presenting to you this evening was a good one.
But what you have before wetlands is for a permit?
For a permit, so for the existing dock.
Right, for the dock and the stairs. And the landscaping that we're proposing.
Yeah, I think it probably makes more sense to take action on this, only because it's... There's nothing before the commission. I mean, there's... You listed a whole bunch of issues that you have that you're not prepared to address without...
Well, normally, in that case, then the commission would continue it, but, you know...
But they can continue it, but if you're willing, are you going to withdraw the wetlands application?
I wasn't planning on doing that.
I mean, if you feel like you've got solutions that are addressed in the commission's comments...
And you've got... Yes, he agrees.
It's something that we're going to have to review. I thought the alternative language in maintaining what's there for the benefit of the five property owners was a solution.
So the question is, if you want to continue it, then, per Mr. Hegney's comments?
I think... Okay.
Is that what you're requesting the commission to do, that you're going to give them the option?
Huh?
I don't think it works. I don't understand why he wants to keep it open, because...
It's got a potential...
We're going to tell wetlands that we don't agree with the open space being violated, so wetlands can't approve it.
That's neither here nor there.
Katie, I have a question. In the 2006 application, the open space shows a 17% of the overall subdivision, and requirement is 15.
That's a lot more than 2%.
Does all the open space have to be contiguous or...
It's better.
But does it have to be?
It doesn't have to be.
And could the 2% represent this pathway?
It could. It's more than 2%, but here's the thing. The applicant has to figure out how to solve that, not us. He's violated the terms of his open space. He has to figure out how to solve it. It's not our job to solve it now and to give him a correction on the fly of, hey, if you give us another 2%, because we're setting a precedent that's important, that it's okay to violate your open space.
Well, not...
No, not questioning that.
That's not the point. The issue, Mr. Hartman, is that the declaration is a legal document that is signed and filed on the land records. That was a deal that was made in perpetuity. So as I was saying, you can't just willy-nilly change open space. It's very, very rarely done, and the instances that the commission have done it, there's been something better that has been presented.
Well, that was my second question. What are the precedents, if any?
Mr. Hegney, can...
So I think we're kind of done. I don't think we need to... You want to give us precedence, you can send us a brief.
Well, not if you've already voted.
Correct.
We don't have to close it. I'm okay with that.
I'd like to be able to explore some options, and I think Mr. Hartman's ideas intriguing.
Very clear guidance.
Very clear guidance.
Yeah. Okay.
So you're keeping it open?
Mm-hmm.
You're asking for a...
I'm asking to leave it open.
Just through the microphones.
Okay.
And so you're going to deal with the notice issue? You're going to deal with the revised declaration, which is that you need more than what's there? Look at the figure picture issues, how this relates to the other problems in the area particularly that keep things down?
That'll keep us busy.
So you wanted to... Hold on a second.
No, 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 no.
So do we have any public...
Number six.
No, wait, wait, wait. Did we have any public comment on that application? No. Okay. Now, commission...
I'll try to make sure there is some next time.
Commission, just to double-check with everybody, is everybody... Mr. Yaski would have liked to have closed it and voted on it. Ms. Goss, in essence, what Katie is advising me is that if the attorney wants to keep the application open, that we should give him the opportunity to keep it open. Okay, so we will keep it open. Okay. All right. And with that...
That is a precedent.
What?
In the state of Connecticut.
To allow the applicant, when they've requested time and there is time left, to be able to leave an application open to bring more information to the commission's...
Are you representing Brunswick as well? So the next application...
Oh, you're going to get really sick of me this evening.
So the next... Yeah. The next application is the... I think you're going to get sicker of me, to be totally honest.
Never, Madam Chair, never.
The next application is the Brunswick School...
There is an harassment quotient.
For a final... Yeah.
There's a quotient.
Yeah. You're not supposed to nag the chair. That's what Mr. Yaski was telling me. Brunswick School, final site plan to revise a previous site plan approval and construct a new track, et cetera, 1275 King Street. Commissioners, just so you're aware, on this application, should we not decide it now, we will need an extension, but there is an extension available. Okay, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is... I've got my clicker here. This is the Brunswick property on King Street. They have 100 acres on the west side of King Street and 43 acres on the east side of King Street. This involves the area where you approved in 2017... Or 2018, excuse me, a ball field on the south portion of 1275 King Street. The ball field is shown as the arched outfield there, and the shaded portion is what is the additional portion that would be needed for the track. When we came to you in 2018, we were contemplating putting the track on the west side of King Street and moving the ball field, which is currently on the west side of King Street, and the soccer field, to the east side of King Street. And the thought was that, after we looked at it some more, that why disrupt two sides of the campus when, if you're looking to just build a track and the spaces on the east side, just build the track on the east side? It was a plan that we had looked at initially. We thought that it might be better to take advantage of the topography on the west side, but it requires a great deal of drainage on the west side that doesn't need to be disturbed. And we still would need to do drainage on the east side for the baseball field if it was located or relocated to the east. So the thought was we should just disturb one area rather than two areas. And so that's what brings us here this evening. We have gone to the Architecture Review Committee. They asked for a couple of different things. One was that rather than... Walls designed by engineers, the walls should be designed by landscape architects, which we did do. And Bill Kenny, our landscape architect, revised the plans to soften the curves of which we did do, and Bill Kenny, our landscape architect, revised the plans to soften the curves of the walls. And the other question, the other comment that they made, which I thought was sort of interesting, was to reduce the amount of overall landscaping, which is what's reflected in the plan that Mr. Kenny revised. The location of the track in relation to the ball field that was approved back in 2018 is the same with regard to the walkway that leads up to the tunnel, which you approved on the King Street. And so there's no change in terms of the walls or the landscaping or the, the tunnel itself. That's all the same, whether it's a, a ball field or, or a track. The portion that is added is that easterly portion of the track and the retaining walls, and we have that heavily landscaped. So.
For some reason, didn't get a copy of that landscape plan, at least I didn't. The revised one? I don't have it.
We, we can certainly provide that to you.
And my notes from the briefing session are that we don't have it. And Ms. Mock makes the same comment. She says that no landscaping plan was provided to her, that more than fifteen mature trees are being removed and that she doesn't have the landscape plan. She said that the original had vegetative species and a tree replacement of four to one, but now there are more trees being removed. So I, what we'd like you to do on this, I think, is to go back with the new landscaping plan and review it with Ms. Mock and make sure that the tree replacement is commensurate with what you had, with what your initial site plan approval was of the four to one.
Yeah, there are a couple of more trees in the center of the field.
Yeah, one is a very, what did you mention? Mr. Hartman, you, you were pointing out that there's one that's a very large caliber oak, is it, or maple?
Fifty-inch oak, if I remember.
So that's pretty significant. So I think, since you have not given Ms. Mock an opportunity to comment on the incremental tree removal and whether your landscape plan would still be consistent with having the native species, she had asked that you consider adding meadow, given the fact that you're already adding more artificial turf, so that you compensate for the addition.
We can certainly do that to the east, which I don't think is an issue.
So what we'd be asking you is to, is to respond to, to respond to Ms. Mock's memo of April 12th, items three and four on it. In addition, from what we understand, DPW is okay with you doing the easements at the time of permit.
Actually, that's an interesting easement. It's not an easement from the town, it's an easement to the town.
Right.
Mr. Marucci sent to Dave Ginter, our project engineer, the form that he wants us to use. I changed the names in the form and have filed it with staff and will give that to Mr. Marucci. It's, we're putting a couple of new catch basins in King Street. And so that's in the public right-of-way. It's draining onto Brunswick property. So we're giving the town the right to put those catch basins in, although we're going to be the ones putting them in, and draining onto our property.
All right, so that's all acceptable.
And so I don't think he's really concerned about getting that done at this stage because he knows that, that that's what we'll provide to him.
After our action, but before zoning permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so commissioners, any comments?
Is this a practice or a game field?
It will be both. They would have up to three meets a year.
Okay, if it's going to be a game field, explain how the parking and.
Lighting.
Hold on, one step at a time, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Parking, bleachers, anything like that. If it's a practice field, one thing, great, we've got kids out there running around. But if it's actually a game field, then I've got parents, et cetera.
First thing I should say, there will be no lights.
Okay.
We're not proposing lights for this at all.
Okay.
And parking would be both on this side and across the street, which is now accessible through the tunnel that we'll be constructing hopefully later this month.
Where on this site?
There is parking. There is parking on the north side of the building, the middle school building. Significant parking there. There's some parking also on the south side of the building. And of course, there's a great deal of parking across the street.
Okay, so we're going to get the, the landscape plan to Ms. Mock. She had recommended a tree replacement of four to one. Is that something that's okay?
That was agreed in the original site plan.
I, I suspect that we exceed that, given the amount of planting that's associated with this.
Well, she hasn't seen it, and that was what was in the original site plan approval? So we would not be revising the original site plan approval for the tree replacement?
That's, that's fine.
Any amplification, any sound system going in with the soccer field? Okay.
No.
Scoreboard.
We'll, we'll be coming back with the scoreboard at a later date.
And you're going to go to ARC, okay.
And we could take that to ARC, yeah.
Okay, so they're going to go to ARC with the scoreboard?
Where's the scoreboard on the site?
I don't know if we've gotten that far.
I think we should get that far. I, I, it seems that we're actually doing this little piecemeal.
Mr. Ginter tells me it's on the southeast corner. So as we look at it, that would be to the lower right-hand side of, of this map.
The southeast corner?
Right, sa, oops.
So north is up, south is down, and east is to the right.
Right, you can see the, the north-south indicator here, so we're talking in this area right here.
It faces the field and out towards King Street and the rest of the lot.
Right. Quite a distance from King Street. I don't think you'll be able to read the scoreboard as you drive by.
Well, I don't know, because it's not part of the application. So you're saying, okay, we'll do it later, and it goes to ARC, and next thing I know I have a Jumbotron sitting on King Street. I can watch a movie from an airplane, so.
They go below the green area requirement here.
No, no lighting, but the scoreboard could be even worse, so.
Probably have more green area or?
But we'll make a note of that.
So.
Okay.
So.
And this is that the field is actually turf?
Yes.
So where this was originally going to be.
Artificial turf.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Right.
So one of the things we're going to have to do is modify the green area requirement for you. But where it was supposed to be originally, is that going to be green area now?
That's going to remain the soccer field and the baseball field.
Okay, and that's going to also be artificial turf?
I don't think there's a change to that at all. I think it's going to remain the same.
But you're not getting incremental green area on the other side? No, okay.
We're, we're leaving it the way it is.
It's staying the same.
The ball field is natural turf.
Okay.
And the soccer field is natural turf.
Same, same.
This field is artificial.
Right.
Okay.
And the green space, I guess we're going.
We have to make a modification.
Seventy-five point eight percent to eighty-four percent?
From eighty-four, which is required.
Right, from two, okay.
Eighty-four being the requirement, and we're modifying it to seventy-five point eight.
Okay. Okay.
And you did say that you integrated all of the ARC comments about the tunnel and all of that one.
Yeah, that, that's part of Mr. Kenny's plan.
All right, okay. So the key really here is the landscape plan and that it still, it still complies with the original approval for this site as, as to the landscaping and that we would want Alexander to review that prior to zoning permit?
Yes.
Okay, so commissioners, any other comments on this? Members of the public, any comments on this? Okay, so we'll close and take a motion, Mr. McRae.
Application, PLPZ 2019-00055, final site plan, revise previous site plan approval, construct a new track and series of retaining walls at 1275 King Street by Project School. Motion to approve application with the following conditions, that the commission. What's that?
No, go ahead, it's a question. Somebody's asking me about a different application.
Following conditions is zoning, that there would be a modification of the green area as required under the Section 205, asterisk, Note 7D. Eighty-five, eighty-four percent is required, it will be modified to seventy-five point eight percent. The engineering easement to the town of Greenwich can be, should be resolved before the zoning permit is issued. A landscape plan is to be provided to planning and zoning staff and conservation staff for review. It shall address the notes indicated on the April 12th letter, specifically items three and four, prior to the zoning permit. Tree replacement should be four to one.
Native species and the meadow.
Native species and the meadow. There will be no lighting of the lot or the playing field. It will be a practice and game field. A scoreboard is to be proposed and brought to ARC. It's to be located in the southeast corner.
And no, Mac, no amplification of, of whatever you, you know, what you.
Yes.
And that you said the scoreboard to go to ARC, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the green area piece specifically, you have to make the finding that the proposed development provides sufficient landscaping, planting, and screen.
Right, which is why it has to go back to the Conservation Department for review prior to zoning permit.
Right, so that to, the landscaping plan specifically.
The landscaping plan specifically must be reviewed by, by Conservation.
But that's just for the species and whatever, because.
But it's also to satisfy us that, that there's sufficient planting to offset the reduction in the green area.
Right, okay, but the fundamental plan, you guys are making that finding, you just want some specifics.
Well, we haven't seen the landscaping plan.
Okay, he just presented it this evening.
He just presented it this evening. I don't count that as seeing it.
Right, okay, I wish we would have just said that.
I want it to be reviewed. If, if Conservation has an issue with it, it doesn't get, it comes back.
You guys are the ones who have to make the finding, though. So if you are, so if you've looked at the landscaping plan in, in aggregate and want, and want Conservation to make some comments on the specifics, that's one thing. But you are the only ones who can make the finding under this section.
I think we can do that.
Okay.
Understanding that.
Right now, I think, I think there's actually, there's, there's, there is, there, well, let's leave it at that.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead, I hope it.
I don't know, maybe we should make it sterner.
Okay, all right.
I just think you guys have to be the only ones.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. All right.
Okay, feel free to have a little on scoreboard, ARC.
Lighting, no amplified sound?
No public address system.
There you go.
To be used as an athletic field only.
And that the parking is to be accommodated on-site?
I got that on the screen.
Got that, okay.
All parking for use of the field, for spectators and/or use of the field is to be contained on-site. There shall be no parking in any area other than designated lots to the north and to the south of the building. No parking on driveways or access roads.
May I ask a clarification question? When you say on-site, you mean properties owned by the school?
Yeah, so it's designated parking lots either across the street or on this lot. But no, specifically no parking on, on roadways or accessways, they've got to be in the lots.
Yeah.
I think I've got that. Anything else, anybody?
No, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, yes, I'm sorry, Hartman's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so with that, we begin the public hearing. Our first application in the public hearing is Parker Stacey for a zoning text amendment to amend 65A 27-2 and 694B4. Hello, Mr. Higginson?
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Higginson, on behalf of the applicant. I was wondering whether you wanted to hear this application and the next one together, or did you want me to just present the amendment to the zoning regulations first and then we take up the?
Just the amendment.
I would suggest you just present the amendment, yep.
Very well. We were here back on February 21st, and there was a discussion on a need to amend the regulations to deal with healthcare professionals because although the commission did amend the regulations and provided for a definition of healthcare professionals, they didn't get put anywhere in the use regulations. So there's a definition for something that doesn't have a place within the rest of the regulations. So we discussed amending Section 6-94B4, which provides for a special permit approval for, as it currently stands, medical professional offices in residence homes. So what we did was add the phrase "and" healthcare to several places within Section 6-94 to include them as part of a use for medical professional offices. So it would read in 6-94B4, it would read resident medical and healthcare professional offices. We added that also in subsection A. In subsection B, there were five criteria that needed to be met as part of any special permit approval. And currently, there is no limitation on any kind of group sessions or meetings, and there's no limitation on when those meetings could occur. So for example, if a psychiatrist in his office, as the regulation currently reads, decides to have twenty or thirty people meeting at one time and have that meeting run till midnight, there would be no reason why that couldn't happen under these regulations. So we proposed two limitations. One, that any group session or meetings shall be limited to no more than ten participants and that no group sessions shall be permitted after 8:00 PM. To provide for those kind of limitations within the regulation because the regulation itself recognizes that these particular types of uses could involve a high-traffic generation and parking demand, which is why you have the five other conditions set forth to be able to provide for some type of control on, on both parking and traffic. The other change that we're proposing is in the definition of healthcare professional and that currently psychologists would only be allowed to work one-on-one with people to revolve, to resolve health issues. Oftentimes, psychologists may be meeting with a, with a couple or with a family, which would be not permitted under this particular definition of healthcare professional. So we're proposing to remove one-on-one and as it gets included in 6-94, that the conditions as amended would be what would control. And that's our proposal for an amendment to the regulations.
Any comments, commissioners?
Mr. Higginson, I think I agree with you about the healthcare professional. Kind of a floating around a little bit too in our, our regulations. I think specifically the 694, Section 4, the resident medical professional, as it's written. Kind of an interesting thing that the purpose of the amendment is to organize that the office of a resident medical professional is not a low-impact use that can really blend harmoniously into a residential neighborhood. I think that's the gist of what we're really looking at this and why we've been looking at this. I think I should kind of clarifying that, that with a doctor, doctor sees patient, patient shows up at the house, that kind of thing, but it's actually, there's a lot of things that are built into this. Have the required amount of land, the parking, so on and so forth for, you know, that doctor use. But it also, to me, seems that actually the doctor is actually only seeing one patient at a time. And I think that was the intent of this, is that actually a doctor can live in a home and would have his office in a home, but he wouldn't be seeing this constant flow of, you know, patients all the time. It's a, kind of minimizing it to be a low-impact issue. I think one of the things about the, the resident medical profession, doctor, that is, under B, with not more than two non-resident support personnel, such as a secretary, receptionist, aide, or nurse. Okay, I think one of the things that we had talked about yesterday is that that's something you were kind of thinking, okay, it's a doctor, doctor may have a nurse, maybe you have a receptionist, that kind of thing. I think with the healthcare professional, it may not be the same kind of situation. I think one of the things that actually has been most troubling with this application and this amendment now is that we're getting back into this group session issue. Group session of ten participants, no groups there shall be recorded after 8:00 PM. I believe that's in direct conflict with the intent of this regulation is, is that you have, it's a one-on-one issue with a medical doctor, that kind of thing, talking to a patient. I think with a group, you wouldn't have a doctor talking to a group of people in this kind of situation where you have, you know, ten patients at one time. And I think that's the thing that's really troubling. I think that goes back now to your, the definitions in 6527, 27.2, striking the one-on-one, I think is actually where it really comes. It is a one-on-one thing. The medical professional is talking to a person one-on-one, is examining. The medical professional is talking to a person one-on-one, is examining a person one-on-one. When you start to bring the groups in, then you have, was basically the dissemination of that intent of a low-impact use in a residential neighborhood. I can understand, yes, maybe ten people is not too bad, maybe if a baby goes home before eight o'clock, but to me, it's in direct conflict with what the intent of that regulation is.
If I could respond to some of those comments, just because a particular type of practice that a doctor may have is only seeing patients one at a time, that doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of people there. Seems every time I have to visit the doctor, I'm not the only one sitting in the waiting room, and-
We don't, if people, when the public is going to speak, we will announce it. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
And you do, as you pointed out, have the opportunity for support personnel that would be involved with any kind of practice, and frankly, many of the psychiatrists in town have their practices in their homes, and this allows them and, to meet with more than one person at a time, and group sessions are not uncommon with psychiatrists either. And this is something that I'm pointing out, is not a limitation in the current regulations. There could be twenty or thirty people meeting with a psychiatrist as part of some type of, of group therapy that is very much permitted, and I think that you want to have some kind of limitation.
I don't think it's permitted. I think actually, I think it's, it's, it's a, maybe it is, it's a one-on-one situation, but continue, please.
It, I didn't see anywhere in this particular section of the regulations, forgetting the definition of healthcare professional, where it limited it one-on-one. Granted, if you're going to the dentist, you want it to be one-on-one. You don't want it to be multiple people involved, but you, you do have the amount of traffic that's associated with that, that could be much more onerous than a group coming at once and, and leaving at the same time altogether.
Right.
In that kind of instance, you have constant traffic, and you may have people waiting for a prolonged period of time to see the doctor, depending on what their practice is.
And I think actually, with that situation, any of the parking situation that's required by the medical professional actually has to conform with the one fifty-eight, section one fifty-eight for parking.
And you have to provide it onsite, which, which is part of the next application you're going to hear we're, we're able to do. So I certainly see, you know, when I see the distinction between a psychologist and a psychiatrist, the psychiatrist can prescribe medication. Otherwise, they're performing very much the same function to the patients that, that come to see them. And I would say that having a healthcare professional as part of this regulation is certainly very appropriate.
But the, the doctor's office is closed at six o'clock, don't they?
Not necessarily.
Medical doctors in general?
Not, well, and I, I go back to the psychiatrists. They're providing a therapy to people based on the people's schedules, and many are working, as are the, the people that come to the group sessions that the Stacys have, and you want to be able to provide for your patients. And so there's nothing that limits it to normal business hours. It could occur at, at any time of the day.
Well, with the exception that it is a special permit use only, so the commission will look at each individual application-
And, and the commission can do that, that's true. Look at what would be appropriate, given the, the neighborhood and the property involved.
Right.
Yes.
And Ms. Alvin already noted the purpose statement of the resident medical professional office in that respect.
Actually, that was Mr. McRae.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
The guy on my right.
I would wonder, I can't, haven't been on the commission that long, but I would wonder when this regulation was written, if the intent was to, because we're trying to protect the neighborhoods, if the intent at the time it was drafted was for one-on-one or if it was for psychiatrists with group sessions? And I don't, if a special permit has come before the commission before, where we had a psychiatrist with the group sessions, if there's any precedent for that?
Yes.
Well, I mean, as Mr. McRae pointed out, it says, "The purpose of this amendment is to recognize that the office of a resident medical professional is not a low-impact use that can blend harmoniously into all residential neighborhoods. This use involves high-traffic generation and parking demand, delivery of specialized services, et cetera. It's historically been allowed as an accessory use to bring essential service close to where people live, but significant changes in medical practice make it necessary to be selective about the location of the use to protect neighborhoods from adverse impacts that detract from the residential character. The special permit allows the commission to ensure compatibility of a resident medical professional office with the neighborhood and protection of public health, safety, and welfare and value of the property." So it's recognizing that there are issues. They've set five criteria, as Ms. Hegney pointed out, and then it's up to the commission to look at, to look at each operation on a case-by-case and determine whether it is compatible with that, with the neighborhood that, with the properties.
Mr. Yaski?
Well, I was going to say, I want to thank Mr. Hegney, because it's clear that we probably need to work on the existing text, but not your amendment. So we get your point, that there's, that doesn't limit the group, I get it, but I don't think that the intent in a residential zone is to have ten or twenty or thirty people parking in a driveway. I think that violates the intent, and it is a good point that maybe we need to, to be more specific in the existing regulations, but not to add, because I do believe the one-on-one is critical, and I think the intent was, maybe you have one or two cars, but you're not going to have ten or twenty. So point six and seven, I don't think is, is acceptable. I don't care about the time, it's a group. I don't think anybody wants group sessions in a residential neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But I do appreciate pointing out that we probably need to work on this section, as we probably need to work on many sections.
I'm at your service.
Well said, Mr. Yaski. I agree with you that it's very clear that the intent is, is to, it be, it blend harmoniously into a residential neighborhood, and that group activities with night lighting and many people, and actually, a doctor, even a doctor who's seeing multiple patients at the time would be inconsistent with the goal of this regulation. I completely agree with you. Any other comments from the commission? How about we go to the public and then, okay?
Seems reasonable.
Could we hear from members of the public? Does anybody have any comment? You know, that thing is crooked, it's been making me, no, I mean, the whole thing. It's, yeah, the podium. I straighten pictures in strange hallways. Yeah. There you go.
First of all, I want to apologize for looking so tired.
Sorry.
And, well, like, just like all of-
Your name, please, ma'am, I-
Adele Skilin. I live at two Kinsman Lane, next door to one Kinsman Lane, which we're talking about, and even tonight, there were seven, over seven cars, extra cars, which you asked them to-
We're actually not on that application just yet. We're just on the text-
Text amendment.
So it's broad, it impacts all properties. You're talking about a specific application, which is-
Sorry.
Okay.
Just be more general comments on this.
So what they're asking us to do, as you saw, is to change our regulations so that-
To a clinic.
The social worker would be allowed to work in a residential neighborhood.
Well, I mean, in, in that case, then, could, next door, my sister and my mother are both lawyers, and I have a psychology degree too, can I open up my yard to?
If you, but that, and that's the question, if you had a psychology-
It's not right, it's a residential area.
Well, our regulation permits medical and psychiatrists, but now they're proposing to add social workers because, yeah, okay, go ahead. So give us your comments.
I mean, that amount of traffic for a place that is residential, there's nothing on the other side. There are tennis courts, there's a baseball field.
Go, go general, go to all of town and how it impacts.
So, and we don't, I mean, you don't have that next door. Go rent a place, that's all.
Okay, so you're saying that generally-
It's inappropriate.
There, in a residential neighborhood-
Yes.
To have which part? To have a doctor's office or to have group? Group activity?
Both. I mean, if you have one-on-one, that's acceptable, maybe, because that's one car at a time.
Okay.
It's never one car at a time. It's multiple cars at a time. You just, they, he just proposed another thing to make their driveway even bigger, to expand even further. I mean, it's, it's completely inappropriate.
Okay, so back to, we're not doing the house yet. I'm sorry, I know this is confusing. Don't focus on one Kinsman, just on that there's a regulation, and you could be living anywhere in town.
It brings our property levels down. It's, it's just not right. I mean, do you want me to have, like, someone coming in at midnight? I mean, at which they're proposing, I've, I heard the hours correctly.
Right, yeah, it's, um-
I mean, that's, those are extremely broad hours. They said, I mean, it's-
Okay.
And nobody's been enforcing, actually, the time within that you said they were allowed to have clients. Nobody has been enforcing that.
Um, yeah, okay. Well, supposedly, while they're correcting it, while they've been submitting this, I don't know, they can continue to operate while they submitted, while they're, while they're working on the correction of it, correct?
They've allowed to put every single thing in front of you, four different things in front of you, and keep operating and still shining their lights in our eyes. I still have to commute to work. I mean, am I allowed to open an office right there? I don't think so. It's not fair to my neighbors. It's not fair to the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. No, no, it's okay. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this application? Ma'am? I saw you, though.
Maria Vitaleano, mother of Adele Skilin, two Kinsman Lane. I have to agree with what my daughter has said. My other daughter has written letters, and there has been no respect for this commission. For three months, they continue to violate the regulations after being told at three different hearings not to do it, and they continue. And I would like to know how we can possibly enforce the regulations of this town when there are people in this town that disrespect them, disrespect the neighbors, and dis, and why can't they go rent a facility instead of constant traffic night after night in their driveway?
So in general, you don't think that it's appropriate to have this type of service in a residential neighborhood?
No, of course not, and neither one of them is a Ph.D. nor a psychiatrist. Mrs. Stacy, I believe, is-
Ma'am, I, I keep, you, right now, we're not talking about the Stacys. This is, they're proposing, what the part we're talking about right now is just to change the regulation for all of town, that they want to be allowed to have the social workers work, or physical therapists and people like that be allowed to work in a residential neighborhood, anywhere in town. That's what's before us right now. And as soon as we close this and decide this, then the next thing will be, we're going to talk about the Kinsman property, one Kinsman. But right now, if you could just keep your comments general to how allowing it in all of town?
I'm against allowing it in all of town. This is a beautiful town. I've gone to school here, I've lived here most of my life, and I don't like what I've seen so far going on. All the construction, the debris all over, the dust. No, I'm totally against it being done throughout the town.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, commission. My name is Ted Walworth. I live at two thirty-nine Teconic Road, and have been a resident of Greenwich for, excuse me, all my life. I am sensitive to the value of neighborhoods. I am sensitive to the characteristics that make them up, to the people that occupy them, to the camaraderie that is delivered through heartfelt friendship and care. I'm sensitive to the value lost when a medical practice and a psychological center is next to one's property. I am sensitive to the quality of life and the feeling that I get from open space, from the aura of what that means, and the usage of the land that surrounds me in the place that I love and that I, in which I grew up. I'm sensitive to the change that goes on and the essential characteristics of what makes us want to live here in Greenwich, and how hard we fight to keep that quality of life and not have our property values marginalized and diminished in a town that is already fighting to keep its property values intact. This is the second worst application I've seen in front of the town since the Greenwich Center for Hope and Renewal. This permits massage therapists with two aides to operate until eight P M with ten participants. If you look at the definition of what makes healthcare professionals could be applied, waiting for group sessions or meetings. It's an abuse of the first order, claiming to be compatible with a neighborhood and with the protection of the public health, public's health, safety, welfare, and value of the property. I would think the town real estate boards would be up in arms, and the legal profession would strongly voice their disapproval of this clear loss of the value to homeowners if a residential medical practice and a healthcare professional office would be able to practice together to allow ten strangers with cars parked on their street at night while a psychologist, physical therapist, or masseuse is grouping together to save rent rather than operate in a proper place of business. This is something that should not be approved. Please protect our environment, where we live and what we love. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this?
I'm Trey Fitzgibbons. I live at two three four Teconic Road, opposite the Greenwich Center for Hope and Renewal. I oppose this amendment. I think that in, as Mr. McRae pointed out, that the special exception does admittedly put a burden on a neighborhood. And I would also like to say that adding this and the other uses, which are physical therapy, nutritionists, massage, and so forth, and then making it possible to have a special exception puts an unnecessary burden on the member, the residents of this town, because just like tonight, we have to come down and then try and defend our own property rights. So I do understand from what I just heard, that you are not contemplating this amendment as written, but I do encourage you, as you consider any sorts of amendments permitting special permits, that you take into consideration the people of this town who have to come down and defend their property rights. Normally, in these situations, I've heard it mentioned here, and I've heard it mentioned at the Board of Appeals, there are frequently winners and losers, and what I am hearing described in- there are frequently winners and losers. And what I am hearing described, in this case and in other cases, is the movement of a property value from one person to another. And I think it's very important that this commission start to consider the economic values that you might be moving around without, uh, your intent. And if you may have noted, uh, in today's Wall Street Journal-
Yes, I saw that.
-there was an article discussing-
We all read it. Yeah, we all read it. Yep.
I can assure you that putting massage therapy, I can tell you from having the Greenwich Center of Hope and Renewal across my street, for me, it does not enhance your property value. It depreciates.
I should have asked Mr. Walworth this question, but while you're here, Mr. Fitzgibbons, the regulation as it stands now requires that in the one-acre zone, you have to have one and a half times the minimum amount of land. So, you have to have at least an acre and a half in the one-acre zone to have the practice. In the R-20 or the R-12, you have to have twice the land. So, where you would normally have 12,000 square feet, you would have 24,000 if you're going to have a medical office, which is what's allowed now, forgetting the proposal. Just feeling you out on it, oh, and then the final one is in the R-7 and the R-6, it has to be two and a half times. So, the idea, when this regulation was written originally, and this is what we need to think about going forward, is are we providing enough buffer between, if we set it up so that it's one doctor, one patient, is having two times, two and a half times, one and a half times the total lot area that would normally be required, is that sufficient protection for the neighborhood? Do you have a thought on that? As we think about this, I'm not really asking you about this specific proposal now. I'm saying, hey, here's the regulation. If we think about the regulation going forward, is even the basis of it working for you?
We do not have, other than the very large Greenwich Center for Hope and Renewal-
Which is not-
-in our neighborhood. I would, I would reverse the question to you-
Okay.
And I would say-
And here I was hoping to get help.
How many doctors' offices are there in this town on residential properties-
Four.
-that meet this condition?
We don't know.
And I would, I would want to know that.
It's a good question.
I can tell you that any commercial activity, fee-paying activity, does not belong in a residential neighborhood. That's why we pay the taxes, so we can live there without a business. There are people who pay a lot of taxes, be gathered in the business section, and they attract their commercial activities. It's this mix and match that starts to cause a problem.
Yeah.
And what I heard before about 30 people going to a psychiatrist's office, and it's now 9:13, and we have to sit around and listen to that sort of stuff. I think I would, might have much more respect for this commission than I saw exhibited.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this application? Okay, commissioners, comments, discussion, um, what would you like to do with this? Uh, Mr. Hegney, would you like to make some more comments, but let us talk about it afterwards, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Of course, the, uh, the appellants on the decision that you approved for the Center for Hope and Renewal live in an RA4 zone, uh, this regulation only applies to the one-acre zone and, and below. And, uh, I think your, your point was a good one, Madam Chair, that, uh, it does require to, you to have lots that are much larger than what is the minimum lot size required in the zone. And I think that's one of the things that the commission looks to in terms of providing greater land and distance between buildings on properties, and having more of an open look than a R-12 zone, for example, might have with just 12,000 square foot lots. So, so I think the regulation does, uh, does look at, at that.
The feedback you've gotten from the commission's pretty consistent, from what I can tell. The commission appears willing to consider adding the healthcare, interrupt me, anybody if you disagree, adding a healthcare professional, but only on a one-on-one basis, not even that. Okay, go ahead. I, go ahead, because that's-
I think it's up to us to actually really clarify the intent.
Okay.
Reading 665-27.2, "A trained specialist who practices an advanced degree who works one-on-one with people to resolve health-related issues." I think that's the intent, is the one-on-one.
That's what I just said.
Okay. But I think this issue goes right back to actually the-
So, the commission would be okay as long as it's one by, one-on-one, and you said no?
I, I think it's got to, it's got to be maintained. It's a healthcare professional is one-on-one.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
Claire, I haven't spoken yet, but-
Yeah, oh, sorry. I took your silence as a scent. I'm sorry.
I think this is a slippery slope, and I do think this impinges on the residential, uh, the quality of residential neighborhoods.
So, you're not comfortable even with a one-on-one?
Uh, no, I'm not comfortable with the change.
With the change? Well, right now, um, a healthcare, a, a medical doctor can do one-on-one. Are you, um, and Mr. Hegney proposes to add a healthcare professional to that category, but to not have it be one-on-one.
There's the, that's, that's the issue, because the intent of the healthcare professional-
So, you're okay with adding the healthcare professional?
No, I'm, I'm not okay with making any change.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms., Ms. Goss?
Uh, it's difficult, but I think if you come home from a hard day at work, and it gets dark at 4 o'clock in the winter, and you have lights from the, uh, the, uh, building for the home next door, and you have the staff coming in and out, and the, that's two cars, and even though they do meet the parking reg, you have two cars with the staff, and then you have two more cars, that's four cars, coming in and out next door to you. And I think a person is entitled to quiet enjoyment of their home, and-
So, you're not comfortable with adding healthcare professional, even if it's on a one-on-one?
No.
Okay.
And I think, uh, further that the property owner, when they buy, they, they need some assurance that next door to them, unless they buy in a, next to a commercial zone or something where they have some expectation that they're going to have these, these, uh, these, these businesses next to them. I think they're, uh, there's certain, uh, we need to respect the quiet enjoyment that do the homeowner.
Okay, Mr. Yeski?
I think I was saying earlier, I just thought about what Mr. Hardman said, and I, I can see the slippery slope. So, I'm definitely not in favor of deleting the one-on-one. And now, I don't even like the healthcare, because I think we have to look at this and figure out whether that's, that's too broad a definition of healthcare. Uh, I know we have some offices of doctors, but they'd be grandfathered anyhow. I think we need to take a look at all those definitions. I definitely am not interested in approving group sessions here, regardless of the time.
So, there's your feedback, Mr. Hegney. What would you like to do with this?
Oh, well, I have another application pending after this, and I-
We're on this one right now.
And I, I need to have you vote on this in order to proceed with that.
We wouldn't normally vote on it now. We're in the public meeting.
No, I'm, I'm not asking you to vote now. I'm just saying that, uh, if you want to close it, that's fine, too.
Okay, so, um, I don't think you're hearing, you're hearing very, very weak support for adding healthcare professional. I can tell you that at the briefing yesterday, the concerns we raised, I imagine that you heard about them, was that within that category of healthcare professionals, there would be potentially people who would be seeking to do more than one-on-one. And we weren't generally comfortable with that. But it sounds as if the commission's thinking has migrated some more since yesterday, and the additional incursion into a residential neighborhood is not getting a lot of support.
Of, of course, you have-
So, if we don't vote on it right this minute, I think you have some clear guidance about where this is headed, from what each commissioner has said.
Uh, you have, over the years, the commission has been encouraging more home office use, because that's the direction that occupations are, are going in. And, for example, I could have an office in my house. Uh, I could have support staff-
As a resident, and just to clarify for everybody, he's speaking of a resident professional.
Right. And that's something that-
Which is permitted.
Any, any one of us could do without actually a special permit.
And see, here's the nub of it. The assumption behind the resident professional and what the current 694 tries to do is to not have too many clients, customers, patients coming in. So, you get, we are encouraging home office use. We do believe it's, we're hearing a lot of feedback on that for the POCD. But at the same time, we're hearing loud and clear about the, the intrusion of commercial into the residential space, and that people aren't comfortable about that. Uh, you heard ample comment on that. So, um, we can close this. Uh, you know what?
Yeah. The more I think about it, maybe it would be better to leave it open. Consider some additional restrictions, uh, that the commission may find, uh, more acceptable. I, I didn't get the same vibe from my, my, my notes from your meeting yesterday-
Yes, well, it's clearly, um, Ms. Goss-
That necessarily going in this direction.
Ms. Goss was very clear yesterday that she had a concern about increasing the incursion of commercial activity into the residential. She said it loud and clear. Um, Mr. Yeski was, um, has changed, and has, and as he himself just said, his thinking has modified, listening to Ms. Goss's, and Mr. Hardman was not at the briefing. I believe that Mr. McRee had some doubts. I was actually the only one who was pretty open to including the healthcare professional, but none of us were happy with the idea of group sessions. And we all were concerned, as you may have heard, that physical therapists, for example, could have more than one client at a time, and that we were not comfortable with more than one person in the space at a time. And I would add to that, that we're not comfortable about anything after dark, or after 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM? So, but I'm not hearing a lot of support, Mr. Hegney, to tell you the truth. I mean, people don't want to increase commercial activity in residential neighborhoods. And that, we have heard throughout the POCD public input as well. Uh, you're, you're-
Even though it's something that is moving in that direction-
Home office use.
A question why?
Home office use, but not seeing a lot of clients on site. There's a differentiation.
Yeah, I think what Ms. Paul is saying is, uh, the idea of telecommuting is, I think, a, a trend which will stay with us, but I think it's distinctly different than running a business out of your home.
Well, I, I would like to give it some more thought, to see if there are ways that we could address the commission's concerns.
I just asked Mr. Yeski if he could give you any more guidance on if he, if Mr. Hegney was to modify this, would you, is there a way that you could?
Well, Dave, Mr. Hardman is in the middle of a conversation.
I'm sorry. He was done.
Let's let Mr. Hegney come back with, if he wants to hold it open.
I, I, you know what, though, I think if Mr. Hegney wants to hold it open, it's his prerogative, but I don't understand, I don't see a different way of going about this, because I think it, it's the, the text amendment as proposed in front of us is actually the means to an end to provide healthcare professionals group sessions in the same, same kind of scenario as a medical profession. Um, I'm not too sure what could be changed, or how could it be modified to let that happen and us not be satisfied. I think the other thing that's actually, that's, that kind of, I'm thinking about is that, this is the third time? Fourth time we've heard this?
Yeah. And they've continued to operate, but we're going to do that on this-
Yeah, but, but it's, it's that kind of issue. It's like, okay, so, we're going to come back with another, another stab at this.
Well, and, and that's the question, Mr. Hegney. You're getting very limited support here.
It seems to be eroding as we speak.
And sometimes-
Which, which makes me think that it's good to take a step back, think about the language itself, see whether there is some other types of restrictions that can be brought in that would make it more palatable. I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, and, uh, all I'm asking for is the opportunity to see if I can address the, those concerns, um, at a later meeting.
Okay.
May I ask a question, because it's been brought up by the neighbors? They continue to operate. What's-
Site plan. Uh, you're going to do the site plan still, right?
I don't think-
It is the next application.
Okay, he's, when we get to the site plan, you can ask that. We've just got to keep them separate. Okay, so you would like to keep this open and see if you can come up with some thoughts that could make it, um, palatable in some way?
There, there may be other members of my firm that will have more creative ideas than I do about these kinds of things.
Now, there is a, okay, and we're going to talk about it on the next, okay, so you're gonna, you've got, you've heard our concerns. You've heard the commission weigh in. Um, nobody's comfortable with the group sessions, that people don't want to eliminate the one-on-one. And I think everybody said that. Okay? And so, with that, we'll leave this open. And our next application is Parker Stacy for a final coastal site plan. This application must be closed tonight. The maximum extension has already been granted, and it must be closed tonight. Uh, Ms. Goss is sitting, uh, no, you had, uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Yeski is sitting for Goss, who's sitting, everybody's seated, even though originally-
Mr. Yeski's for Mr. Fox.
Mr. Yeski's for Fox. Got it. Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Hegney, before you start, I'd just like to say that, um, the application before us is actually, I think we've established in previous, previous hearings, that actually this, this request for this site plan actually isn't possible, and that we've actually discussed it because it's providing or requesting, final coastal site plan to request special permit approval of a resident medical professional office. And we, I think we've established that it's not. And thus, we had, at the previous application, it was an attempt to amend that or rectify that situation.
Right.
I don't believe that actually us listening to this application, again, gets, gets us anywhere further with this, because we've actually, seems to have established, actually, that this is not a permitted use in this area.
Well, um, we probably need to let Mr. Hegney present his case first. And I believe there's, what is it, you were going to say, there's precedent for that, so we let Mr. Hegney add?
Both continuing and actually speaking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we have been here in January and February, uh, which prompted the prior application that you just heard to be submitted for proposed amendments to the building zone regulations. Uh, other thing that we have done is provided a, a lighting and landscape plan. The, uh, just to give you a bit of an update, the old lighting has been removed. Uh, new, shielded lighting has been installed at a height of five feet. Uh, spotlights on the garage have been removed. Uh, just to indicate that we have listened to what was said and what the neighbors' comments have been, have taken steps, whether this proceeds or not, uh, with an approval to, to address those items. Uh, this is a neighborhood that, uh, is impacted fairly significantly by both I-95 and the railroad, which is running just to the north. My client's property is right here on Bruce Park Drive. Uh, we have the softball field across the street and the tennis courts across the street as well that are part of Bruce Park. Uh, and we have Bruce Park Drive, which comes through, uh, the park onto Indian Field Road and to Exit 4, which creates, as we submitted to you at the last hearing, a great deal of traffic that goes by, uh, the road. The Stacy's property is located at, right at the intersection of Kinsman Lane and Bruce Park Drive. Their driveway can be accessed without going past any other homes, other than on Bruce Park Drive itself, onto the, uh- onto the loop driveway that they have on the side of their house. As, as was mentioned briefly in the prior hearing, we have a lot size, it's 25,000 square feet in the R-12 zone. So it's more than twice the size of the minimum lot size required in the zone. They utilize a small portion of their, of their home, some 445 square feet, which represents 14%. And this is an example of the configuration of the seating that they have for the group sessions which occur at the house. There's also screening on the side and Mr. Pope, I'm gonna ask him to go through his landscape plan with you. It augments that screening. There are no other accessory uses on the site and there are no employees associated with the counseling services that they provide. They have been doing this at the property since 1998 when they purchased the property, including the group sessions. And it has been a part of the neighborhood for two decades. If the issue has been lighting, Mr. Pope is here to describe what his suggestions were and what has been done to address that issue. So I'd like to ask Matt to go through his plan and describe what, what has resulted from what his recommendations are.
So I guess here, Mr. Pope, what I'd like to ask you is, we looked at the lighting plan the last time that this application was before us. We commented on the fixtures. We, I remember specifically Mr. Fox not wanting certain of the lights to remain. Has any of that been done on the property? Has that happened because that was all agreed on at the last meeting?
Well, let me, again, Matthew Pope, Landscape Architect. Let me just go through, I'll go through very quickly.
Okay, well, I guess the first question is, has this changed?
Yes.
To Mr. McRae's comment, these are getting into real specific site plan issues. Do you want to ask Mr. Hegney to address the fundamental question that Mr. McRae raised? To how to get over the resident medical professional?
Because we saw this and I, unless you're here to tell us that you've made some significant change since the last time we saw it, I don't think you particularly need to share it with us at this time. That's where I was going. And I think, Mr. Hegney, it's, it's your application, sir. You're the attorney representing it. If you think it's of vital importance to share the lighting and landscaping with us and get to the elephant in the room at a different point in time, feel free.
No, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to have Mr. Pope go through what he has done since the last meeting.
But the elephant remains, so.
Well, we have to deal with the small creatures as well as the big ones.
So, but that, okay, it's your choice.
We'll paint the elephant's toes and then.
Okay, so it's your choice, you're the attorney.
Yeah, we would like to proceed with.
You would like to present, okay? So, Mr. Pope, will you tell us how this has changed since the last time it was before us?
Again, Matthew Pope, Landscape Architect. I've been, over the last month and a half, I've been to the site during the day and several times at night. And most recently, I've been to the site about a week and a half ago at night. And the main change is, let me just go through on the plan. There's a photo at the bottom of the picture here.
It's the same one.
The fixture on the right is the fixture that was there previously. And the fixture on the left, the fixture on the right, again, it's not dark sky compliant, very visible. And then the fixture on the right, dark sky compliance, kind of cone shaped. Those were recently installed.
Yeah, that's the ones that you reviewed with us the last time.
No, no.
These, I remember them specifically.
But that was, I think on that one, we had taller poles.
Mr. Fox asked you to lower the pole.
We did, that was at eight feet.
Yes, he asked you to lower the one that was at eight feet, I recall.
So this one is, the fixture is up to my nose, it's about five feet high. It shines approximately two and a half times the height of the pole, so maybe about 12 feet or so away from the pole. And there's four poles located. We're just using existing poles. There's a soft white bulb that they, that was installed in him, so it's, has a nice glow to it. Along the property line here, we are proposing a row of green giant arborvitae. There's actually a fence here that is higher than the light pole. I think that's a six-foot section here, this area here. When you go by right now, it's actually kind of nice with the, again, the pole, the light fixtures are only, again, like I said, five feet tall. On the corner of the house right here, the floodlight that was there has been taken off and removed.
Mr. Hegney, can you go back and show that picture with the lights on? Ah, technological challenge.
I took this with my phone, my phone. It's actually brighter, it looks brighter than it actually is in real life.
Yeah, it looks quite bright.
Yeah, no, but if you go there, if you drive by there at night, you'll see that.
We've actually been seeing, now, when did you install these?
About a week ago.
Because we've been seeing pictures of this at night since then and it looks like there's still a fair amount of light incursion, wouldn't you say?
But when did you go, though?
We've been seeing pictures. We've been having photographs sent to us by staff.
But again, there's the four poles. You can see the fence in the background here. It's dark. This picture right here is when a car was coming behind me, taking it. That lights up that area that's driving by. This is where we're proposing the arborvitae along this fence right here.
Yeah, and I don't think that's changed. I remember the arborvitae from the last time. So your only changes that you lowered the lights?
And we changed the fixture, so it's dark sky compliant.
The conical fixture was what you showed us the last time.
Yeah, but they were installed, he installed them now.
Okay, so your plan to only change to lower the light to five feet versus eight feet?
What's, it's.
Okay, I remember these conical.
Mr. Pope, the photographs that you are showing us, are these the new fixtures?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so you have actually six, excuse me, four gooseneck on a pole?
Five foot high, yes.
And you have actually, how many? Three?
On the garage.
Okay.
Okay. So the one on, the photograph on the left?
Yep.
On the left?
Yep.
Okay, that's actually existing condition of the proposal that's in front of us?
That this is existing tonight.
Okay.
But they both are existing.
Okay.
I don't know why we're spending time on this, Mr. Hegney. We, this is basically what we've seen, it's very similar to what we saw.
Madam Chair, if the commission has already made up its mind and has decided how it's gonna vote, then we can stop and stop wasting time.
What the commission asked, Mr. Hegney, is that we discuss the major issue before us first, that what Mr. Pope is telling us about are very minor changes in the site plan. There is a major issue before us that Mr. McRae raised. We asked you if you would be willing to first discuss the major issue. We have not made a decision at this time, but it doesn't seem, as Mrs. DeLuca pointed out, to paint the elephant's toes when you have an elephant in the room. Could we discuss the major issue? I don't see significant changes. I can see that Mr. Pope has done what Mr. Fox requested the last time, to lower the lights, to go dark sky friendly. Very glad to see it.
And to implement them.
And the landscaping has remained as it was. Okay, we've done that. Now, there's a big question before us, which is the use itself on this site and the compliance of the site. And that's what Mrs. DeLuca was suggesting, was that we get to the big issue.
And I had started talking about that earlier with the criteria that's in 6-94. And frankly, I, I don't see the difference between a psychiatrist, which would be permitted under the 694 currently, and a psychologist or a social worker that is performing the same kind of counseling but can't prescribe medication.
I believe that that is a comment on our existing regulation and your interpretation of our existing regulation and your comment on it, not on whether our regulation contemplates and approves this use in a residential zone, this specific use. I believe that's what you asked, Mr. McRae?
Yes.
And of course, that's why I submitted the prior application, to amend the regulations so that it would be clear. I think that that was frankly an oversight at the time the healthcare professional was defined to, to not include it in, anywhere in the regulations. To define a use and then not provide for its utility within the regulations doesn't seem to make much sense. And I'm saying that the application that we submitted to amend, 694, was an appropriate one for the commission to consider and to allow this particular use to occur on this property since the other five items that are listed in 694 are met. And we wanted to display to you, and that's why I asked Mr. Pope to address this, that we are taking steps to address what concerns have been expressed by, by the public and by the commission.
But the fundamental issue is, though, that the commission has to review this application against the regulations that are in place. So to that end, could you just go through the resident medical professional office? Or you're saying that you, that you agree that it doesn't, that this isn't, this?
Well, that, that was the discussion we had in February, which is the reason that we didn't come back in March because we wanted to provide a proposed amendment to the regulations, which we have done and which is pending before the commission. And I would, I would concur that the regulation, as it currently reads, does not permit this use, which is why we took the time to submit an amendment to the regulations so that it could be considered.
Okay. And as you pointed out, that, that is still pending.
And that's still pending.
Right, so the commission could take action on that and go from there.
Or, since we're out of time with this particular application, close it. Wait until the amendment to the regulations has been closed and considered, both of them at the same time for a vote.
I don't think that would work legally, just because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an active regulation change while the application is still open.
No, I think, I think that that, that can be done.
So the way, the way I've been taught it at the seminars is that an application goes in under the existing regulations. Once, I don't know how that works, Katie, but as far as I've ever understood it, the application goes in under the existing regulations.
On a number of occasions, I actually have submitted both amendments to the regulations and an application at the same time. The commission has considered them at the same time.
But you haven't, you've left it open, though. You've also left it open, so.
And, and zone changes, I mean, re-zoning properties.
I don't remember doing any regulation changes. We'd have to look at that.
I can give you some examples of that later.
In any event, Mr. Yeski, any comments?
I think we're kind of confused about some legalities here, and I'm not sure of it either. But this is a separate application, right?
Yes, this is the site.
And it's an application for a special permit to approve residential medical professional, the way we define it, and operate a consulting practice which provides individual and group counseling, et cetera, et cetera. We could vote on it. I think the feeling, well, we heard the feeling earlier about the group side of it. Group is part of this special permit application, correct, Katie? So as far as I'm concerned, I've heard a lot. I think we debated the definitions. I don't have a problem voting on this particular application at this point.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Hegney, we've heard from the public, you've made your closing comments and I'm asking.
I don't think you actually have heard from the public.
Oh, sorry, I take it back. Thank you. All right, so let's give the public a shot. Anybody would like to speak? Now you can talk about one Kinsman. No, ma'am, you have to stand up, you gotta come, because all this is, you know, it's all legally, you have to pretend you're in court. Sorry, but there's a lot of law that governs this.
Adela Skilin, if he wants to kindly go back to the first picture of the property line,
Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, the, the public is asking if you could show a different shot.
That, that fence we had to build because their car lights constantly, of their patients, go exactly into our house.
Where the property line is?
Yes.
This, there? Go to the lit, the lit one? Is you wanted?
Do you see where the court, you can see where the round?
Ma'am, you have to be closer to the microphone because we have to keep a, there's this nice man recording everything that you're saying.
So you see the corner of their house?
Yeah.
That is literally where my living room is, maybe like 10 feet. And above that is my mother's master bedroom. So you see how the round part, that constantly, their patients coming in and out, which tonight, there were seven, and you asked them to not have any. For the past three months, they have literally been shining their lights in and out around that circle, leaving and coming right into our living room, our bedroom. And when they first, the truth is, they have been doing this for a while, but we were under the assumption that it was a prayer group. They told us it was a prayer group. They lied to us. So we, the neighbors, the Stacys, who are in high regard, I think, with you all, and they show who they are as people, they, they, they lied to all of us. The Stacys live next door to us on the other side. We had no idea, so we let this go for many, many years. It's, it's not fair to disregard us. And also, they mentioned that it's, you know, I-95 and coming off of that. It's a one-way street, it's a dead-end street. Everything comes off, like, right next door to us. It's not fair to have a public practice there. I mean, Greenwich Avenue is 10 minutes away. Just open your own practice. Why do we even have to have this conversation? And why is he allowed to bring us here night, like, month after month after month? It's not fair. I'm, I just, it's completely unfair. And literally, if you look at the corner of that, that is exactly where my living room is. That's exactly where my mother's bedroom is. It's not right.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgibbons. And I almost didn't give you an opportunity to speak, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to point out two things. As you may recall from our prior, Albert Fitzgibbons, 234 Teconic Road. I'd like to point out that Mr. Stacy also opened the Center for Greenwich and Hope Renewal, for Hope and Renewal without a permit and operated it for a number of years before he changed the practice position. And, what was my other point, Ted? Oh, well, also that, that there was an alleged prayer group.
Wait, wait, yeah, Mr. Yeski would like to ask you a question.
You said Mr. Stacy opened the Center for Hope?
Yes.
It's the same person?
One Kinsman Lane is on the original certificate.
You're kidding me.
Wish I was.
Close your mouth. Okay, go ahead, sir.
And I'd also like to point out that the operations after 4:00, 5:00 o'clock for groups is totally unpermitted in a, in a residential area. And I think you, once again, have to consider people who live in residential areas getting what they expect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Maria Vitaleano, 2 Kinsman Lane. By their own photograph of where they meet their patients, I counted nine seats, two on their couch and eight chairs. If you want to look at that again, that's clear evidence of what they do there. It's never one-on-one. Furthermore, we have the ever-source construction problem going on. It's very difficult to get into or out of Kinsman Lane. We never know when they're closing part of the road. And I personally. And I personally have seen their clients' cars mostly come out and turn to the left to go back towards I-95, and there was a crash, almost.
Because it's one-way, is that, going into the piece that's one-way?
It's two ways.
Oh, words, two ways.
But they're turning left onto Bruce Park Drive, and I saw a near-crash a month ago. It's a very dangerous situation.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other member of the public wish to speak on this? Okay, oh, no, somebody's coming. Yes, please, cool. Yeah, well, we did see her finally when she came into view. Hello?
Hello.
Your name, please.
My name is Coco Seabert, and...
Well, you've sent us an email, I believe.
I have, yes.
Being your name, yes.
Yes. And a few topics I'd like to touch on. The first one is the parking enforcement, and I just want you all to know that we are extremely respectful of the parking. Mary is very clear about where we park, and it is never on the street, it's always in their driveway, and we always communicate about when we are going and when we are leaving so that it is very ordered. And I'd also like to touch on the point that having the group in a home office is very meaningful. It brings a sense of community, and those of us who are coming from work really look forward to that home setting. So, having it in an office would bring a different feel. And the group to us feels like family, and many of us, it becomes our family. So, again, to have it in the home office is very important for that feeling as well. I, myself, and other members of the group, also have individual or therapy, or family therapy sessions that either are, that are before the group, and so having that convenience factor is also extremely advantageous to being a member of that group therapy. So, individuals, having it at the home office makes a big difference. And, and just to touch on the point, we are all very, very respectful of the parking.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public? We've got two more people, I think Mr. Walworth got up first. Go ahead, Mr. Walworth, I think you were up first.
Moving chairs. Hi, my name is Ted Walworth, and I live at 239 Teconic Road in Greenwich. And I'd just like to note, in terms of this application for a resident medical professional office and a, to operate a counseling practice, that Mr. Stacy is not a medical professional, he is a psychologist, number one. And as neighbors of the Center for Hope, 239 Teconic Road, for activity that was constant and always at night, we were also told that they were prayer groups that were coming in at the time and not necessarily psychological groups. So, that's a constant, and we, we've heard it before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There was one other person who wanted to speak. Oh, I think I know. I just asked you what, but...
My name is Kevin Scovron, and I'm from the Wednesday Night Group. Excuse me. Everyone enters and leaves the property peacefully, quietly, and respectfully. The Stacy's driveway can fit a number of cars, and I've never seen anyone from the group park on the street. Would make no sense to me. Dozens of times, leaving the Stacy's, whether it be in the morning, or afternoon, or in the evening, I've heard lots of dog barking from next door. I've also witnessed their neighbor standing in the Stacy's driveway, taking pictures of the house, and as I was driving into their driveway, one evening, on Wednesday evening. So, I will conclude with the immeasurable feeling of comfort and safety that the home environment gives versus an office setting. I've experienced, I've experienced personally both therapy and psychiatry in office settings where the feelings have been stunted and stoic, and our one-time off-site group meeting confirmed the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. You have to come up, say your name and all of that, because that man is recording everything you say and transcribing it.
Ryan Wick, 74 Howard Road. I had to step out for a moment, I apologize if someone brought this up, but I, I wanted to bring up one point that I don't think has been brought up yet, that this, there is a, either an individual or a group of individuals, and Parker Stacy is one of them, who are, I believe he is tied some way to the Center for Hope and Renewal on the other side of town, which is, which is a similar business. And I think these individuals are trying to exploit the rural nature of Greenwich for their own professional and economic gain, okay? So, I just, I want to point that out as something broad to watch out for that's going on across this town.
Okay.
Right? And I don't think that point had been made before, the connection between Parker Stacy and the Center for Hope.
No, we had not been, yeah, I'm sorry, no, you can't do that.
I'm sorry, I had to step out, I might have missed it.
No, 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 that's all right. Somebody had brought that up a little while ago, we were unaware. It's hearsay to us at this point.
Okay.
And irrelevant to this application, because all we're looking at right now is this specific One Kinsman Lane, what this person would like to do, what this couple would like to do.
Okay, so this would have been relevant to number seven, which is also Parker Stacy, which was town-wide.
Exactly, so, exactly.
Okay, that's fine.
You got it, exactly. So, right now...
Should have spoken then, sorry.
That's okay. So, right now, it's, if you have any comment on the specific, this specific address, One Kinsman Lane, their application?
I guess it, it sounds a lot like, this specific address sounds a lot like what happened at the Center for Hope and Renewal in my neighborhood on the other side of town.
And you're, and you're concerned about...
And I'm concerned about people abusing the...
Rural nature.
The rural nature of Greenwich for their own personal gain, and, yes.
Yeah, now, we did permit, we do permit, and that was one of the things, you might not have heard me say this, but I asked one of the other members of the public, we do allow medical offices. A doctor may practice, and the idea was that that's what happened in old New England, that you had your doctor somewhere and you went to his house to see him at some point. And so, the regulations allowed that, but they were very, very specific, and were not clear that, from what we're hearing now, they probably need to be even tighter, is what we're hearing from the public.
Yeah, I, I do see here, it does say one-on-one very specifically, but it, maybe it needs to be changed and reorganized to be very clear, extremely clear in the future.
The one-on-one relates to a healthcare, not to resident medical, not to a medical.
Medical was allowed to have two people, that, if you look at their app, medical was allowed to have two people that worked there, so, but in any event, we hear you. What you're saying is you're concerned that...
Actually, that's a good question, that's one question I have, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
One-on-one, I thought, referred to doctor-patient or professional-patient one-on-one, and did not refer to other support staff.
Well, the doctor's office, a regular doctor, we allow two support staff to be in their house with them, that's what the regulations currently allow, and we're hearing some questioning.
That's still a one-on-one doctor relationship.
Yes, sir, it is, yes.
Which is distinct from a group of 10 or a group of 30.
Exactly.
Right, per the...
And I just, I, sometimes these things get...
Fuzzy.
Next thing, fuzzy and confused, but certainly...
Yes, you're exactly right, sir.
And then, the definition of resident medical professional office is one, is one office in one family dwelling of one medical professional. And then it goes on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? One more.
My name is Neil Flanagan, and I participate in one of the group sessions with Parker and Mary, with Mary, rather. And I just want to share a few comments. I just want to echo the thoughts that everybody has already said ahead of me, that people come in and they're very respectful of the environment and the home and coming and going, and I think we do that in a very quiet way. The, just in listening tonight, the biggest complaint I heard was about headlights. And, you know, I imagine you're looking at this application and trying to figure out, you know, case by case, how to, you know, find a balance between things. And it occurs to me on the lighting that is a potential suggestion, is when people come into the driveway, they just turn their headlights off and then leave, and when they leave, their headlights are going the opposite way, that it, not towards any homes. And that seems to be the biggest objection. So, that's, that's what I heard. So, I just wanted to say that, that that's...
Yeah, but thank you.
That might be a potential solution. The, my personal experience is, there's, it's always been tranquil, the people coming and going. The only experience I've ever had that wasn't, was probably four weeks ago, we were leaving, and there was somebody walking a dog across the street, and I think you have a letter to this effect, and there was just a rare, very bright light being shined, and I would use the word menacing on all of us leaving, just a bright light being shined in all of our eyes repeatedly. And I have a pretty high tolerance for letting things go like that, but it was a little bit over the line. And one of the members who was there had it shone in her lights, and it, you know, it kind of blinded her for a minute and affected her for later in the evening. So, I'd wanted to share that with you. That's been the only experience I've had in two years of going there, that things weren't peaceful and tranquil. And, and my final comment is, as relates to a few comments that were made about the Stacy's and personal gain, I think the work they're doing is much broader than that. There's a lot of people who go there, there's a lot of people who help. I personally think people need more of that in the community, and it's a really good thing. So, it's, it may be their personal gain, but there's a, there's a nice thing about enlightened self-interest, if you're doing things that are self-interest and they're enlightened, and they're doing really good work for people, it's a beautiful setting, and, and there is a lot of prayer that goes on there, and I think that's another thing. So, these are all good things that are going on. And the last thing I would say is the property, if you really go look at the property, the lighting is very muted, those, those pictures didn't do a good job of that. And that property really is unique. You have the park, it's completely sealed off, and it strikes me, the proposal with the Arbor Vitae's there, together with me, some lighting suggestions, really make it work. And if you do look at things on a case-by-case basis, it strikes me that this is one place where it really can work if people want to get there.
Yeah.
So, that's, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, please come back. And just identify yourself again, in case the court recorder forgot you.
My name's Adele Skilin, I live at Two Kinsman Lane. Many of these people have said how tranquil it is for them to go there. And I have to tell you, from a person, like, they're saying they're coming from their workplace, and they're coming from this and that place, like, it is not tranquil for us, having them come there and upset our house, and, you know, if you could enforce muting the lights, which I don't think will happen, and all the traffic that actually comes by, and they're saying they don't park on the other lane, which maybe recently they haven't, but they do most of the time, then, sure, that would be lovely in a perfect world, but the fact that we keep coming back here, and the fact that we've asked them multiple times since then to maybe not have eight people at once, and even tonight, as we speak, right before here, Parker Stacy, he had seven cars coming in and out. That's not very tranquil for me, that's not a home residence. It's really not fair. And that fence that was built, we built that to try to distract away from that, and you know what? The light goes right over it. It's completely unfair, and these people that are coming there for this, they can experience a tranquil feeling, and I know that because I've been in therapy many years, I've done it in different places. You can experience that without going to someone else's home, and you can do it without disrupting someone else's peace. It's not that hard.
Thank you, thanks. Any other member of the public? I almost missed this opportunity. Yes, hello, sir, would you please give your name?
I'm Parker Stacy, I'm the applicant. Just would like to make a couple of comments. We, as Attorney Hegney said, we did begin this practice as soon as we bought the home. And I don't want to get into what he said, she said, but we have never made a secret of the fact that we are, have been operating a counseling practice, including all the aspects of it that you know, which includes group, individual, couples, and families. We have operated all of those since the, since the very beginning. And I was actually present when my wife told our next-door neighbor that that was what we were doing. But as I said, not, he said, she said, we have a website, the website's been up for years and years, it clearly states that we have a home office at One Kinsman Lane, so I just want to be clear about that. I think it might be worthwhile addressing the Center for Hope and Renewal. So, I was asked by the...
No, that's not a subject of this application. We are only discussing One Kinsman Lane, and you should not bring in anything else.
Well, someone mentioned...
I realize that, and I know that we were surprised to hear it, but it is actually irrelevant to this application.
Good.
So, if you would not, I'd appreciate it.
I would completely agree with you. All right. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public? Okay, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Mr. Flanagan said, this is a rather unique location. It meets all of the criteria you have in 6-94, and it does not involve any other properties in the neighborhood for people to access it and to leave. And I think that does make it rather unique, and it, its, its other neighbor is a town park that's actively used throughout the, particularly in the summer, but throughout the year.
How do you find that it meets all the criteria of 694?
It's more than twice the area that's required. It occupies only the use of the house of this in their office.
So, you're arguing that this is a resident medical professional office?
I'm saying that if you apply the requirements of 6-94 and include the change in the regulations of adding a healthcare professional, that we meet all of those criteria.
That application is not, not what we're discussing right now.
Well, that's the prior application I submitted, based on our...
But we're not discussing it right now. You're saying, but the bottom line is, 694 is, that applies to a resident medical professional, and that is not what this applicant is.
And that's why we submitted the amendment to the regulations.
Believe Mr. Mackray, it's where we were an hour ago.
You know, I, I, there was talk about it not being a tranquil neighborhood. The only thing that has not been tranquil about it recently is some disturbing occurrences with this, as Mr. Flanagan mentioned, flying, shining lights in people's eyes, photographing people as they're leaving, to the point where, when Mr. Stacy asked, Mr. Stacy asked me about that, I suggested that he contacted the police department, because that's not the appropriate kind of behavior that should occur.
It may not be appropriate, but that's not the question at hand.
So, that's what he has had to do.
The question at hand is whether this, this application complies with our regulations at this time before us, not whether someone else has behaved inappropriately. Full stop.
Oh, so what we are asking you to do is to amend the regulations to provide for healthcare?
You're not asking us to do that in this application.
I, I...
That was the prior application, we closed, that application was left open.
Right.
This is for a site plan that at this time meets or does not meet...
Madam Chair, if you don't want me to speak anymore, I'll sit down.
But you're taking it away, you're trying to divert it, you are diverting the facts. You're talking about a different application. If you would like to discuss this application, please be my guest.
It's, it's in context of the amendment, which was the last application you heard, which adds healthcare... which adds healthcare to the medical professional in 6-94. They provide the same service, they can provide it in the same fashion, and it is appropriate to include healthcare professional in this regulation as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, this is a must-close, so we have no choice. We have to close it, and we can decide later on if we want to decide it at this time or not. Okay? Okay, so moving on. Oh, I have a motion for a break. We'll reconvene at 10:20? You're right, actually, Victoria, our next application is Tiffany Properties and Management, Inc., for final site plan and special permit. We, this is confusing, Katie. Oh, yeah, we can get an extension. So if we don't make a decision tonight, we would have to ask you for an extension, but we're really hoping that you can resolve these questions. Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Hopper.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Paul Hopper, and I'm representing the applicant. The application before you is a proposal to add a second bedroom to an existing one-bedroom MIDU on 195 Field Point Road. This is our third time before the commission, and we've been addressing various problems, issues, and trying to clarify the position of the MID and its procedures that have come under question, some of which I believe we've addressed, others may still be open, but I'd like to kind of go through where I think we are. And I think we're very close, hopefully, to filing a resolution that is satisfactory to the commission. We have submitted an affordability plan, and that is now, I understand, in the hands of the Law Department. And my understanding is that it's very close to final approval, based on the information I have from the housing specialist, Crystal Berry. There was a request at the last meeting to have a site visit, and that has been done on the 11th of April. Two members of the zoning staff, Jackie Pruitt and Crystal Berry, visited the site, and I believe the site inspection went well, and they were generally satisfied with the premises. It's actually a very nice, very nice apartment, the grounds are kept very well there, the building is in good shape. Mr. Alberto, who's with me tonight, the building owner, takes pride in maintaining that building. One of the other issues that we have been trying to resolve is the issue of the common charges. The common charges are something that are allowed under the regulations, 6-110. They are not defined in terms of what they are exactly. That simply says, you know, that the rent, maximum rent is identified excluding common charges and utilities. So that has been one issue that we've been wrestling with. Initially, when we came before the board, Mr. Alberto was charging approximately $777 in common charges for this MID. He has now submitted, listening to the concerns of the commission, has now submitted a proposal to you that reduces the overall common charges to $340. You don't have that? Oh.
I was quietly waiting to... Okay.
So I will, let me just flip to that. Okay, so this is an email to Mrs. Berry. Do you know the date of it?
Must have been today, because she has not sent it to us.
Okay. I think it was earlier than that, but in any event, I'll read it for you.
We were with Mrs. Berry yesterday, and she didn't mention it, so...
Wish I had more copies, I could give you my copy, I suppose, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could, the only thing you have to do, if you would give Katie a copy, just in case for some reason it got lost.
Sure. Can I just highlight what was in the email? I'll read, I'll read it verbatim, if you don't mind, it's not very long. Dear Mrs. Berry, during our last public hearing, this is on, you know, this email, during our last public hearing before the PNC Commission last week, it was the commission's recommendation that you and I finalize the affordability plan and that I provide a list of future common charges. Please let me know if you want to sit with me to go over my last affordability plan that I emailed you on March 26, 2019, or you'll review on your own. Said Plan, Division 2, is based on the guide you sent me as used by JLOFs located at 16 Old Track Road. There may be a couple of typos otherwise same. My new proposed future common charges, this is what we're talking about now, will be lower than the current rates as outlined below. Building maintenance, $100. Heating of common stairwells and hallways, $50. Lighting, common stairways and halls, $50. Elevator maintenance and usage, $100. Water consumption, flat fee of $40. And one uncovered parking space, no charge. Previously, there were, that was included in the common charges.
We did have this.
Oh, you did have this?
Yeah, we did have this, because we discussed yesterday, we were discussing the $100 for the elevator.
Right, and I know that was, that came up as an issue.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that the, interesting aside, the issue is that the elevator doesn't go to the third floor. And I don't know how many of you know why the elevator doesn't go to the third floor. It was a request by the commission that it did not go to the third floor, because there was a concern that if the elevator went to the third floor, that existing storage place may be converted into commercial use as an office or some other use other than storage. So the elevator to the third floor was changed to an elevator that only went to two floors. So just an interesting aside on the history of that.
Because, no, we didn't know that, but if the commission was concerned about it being used as an office, it was probably not enthusiastic about having it be a bedroom at the time.
Well, at that time, there was no proposal to make it a moderate-income dwelling unit. It was strictly a balcony up there. It was a balcony, and it was a storage area, and mechanicals at the time.
I don't know, Katie?
Where would the elevator come up if it did go up to the third floor?
Well, just continue. You know, the elevator's here, so it would come up.
And then it would, and that's the only use up there is the apartment?
That's the only, yes.
Yeah, so the whole, so it would be, it would come up into, into basically a living room, right? Or it would come up into this, into, into what's proposed as the second bedroom?
No, the second bedroom...
It's the living room.
Katie is over here. This is a storage... Okay, this is a, a storage room over here, that's where the proposed second bedroom would be.
Right, so it would come up into the living room, which is...
It would come up into what is now a living room. But not even sort of a moot point at this point, because that was changed to a two, a two-flight elevator. But, so that, it seemed to be one question, you know, whether or not that should be a common charge. And, you know, again, Mr. Alberto is willing to talk about that and, you know, discuss that further.
So do you now meet the number four? Is the total charge to the tenant is how much now?
Well, right, currently, it's $777.
Plus rent.
Plus, plus the rent, yes.
No, so now you're proposing...
$2,400 all total.
No, the 24 was what it was. So what do you say?
He has it 1623.
Proposed now, it would be reduced instead of 777 to 340.
Right, so it's like 1,900 bucks, basically. A little bit more.
And how much was the common charges?
Right, a little bit more, 1,940.
The base rent was 1,600.
1,600, that's correct.
And now you're adding...
340.
And you're allowed to do how much?
1623.
1623.
1623, but now with the, if it's a two-bedroom, obviously it's more, right? So it's 2029 with the two-bedroom.
Right. So then what does that do to the common charges? Does it keep...
It would just add $340 to that number.
Oh, you're increasing it?
The same common charges, the same proposed reduction in the common charges.
So you're going to lower the rent for this tenant?
The, I'll have to ask Mr. Alberto.
Were we asked the last time?
Yeah, okay.
We were told something? Okay.
Well, if you make it, if you make it a second bedroom and the rent's higher, I mean, they're under lease right now, it depends on when you would do the work, I guess.
So is the total amount of the common charges reasonable now relative to what a moderate-income unit should be charging? Katie?
I think, kind of actually, understanding of the, okay, we have revised common charges. If you can clarify, $100 for building maintenance, what does that cover?
Which one is that, Mr. McQuaid?
Building maintenance, $100.
Building, building maintenance is the, you know, the upkeep of the building, keeping it clean, that type of thing. There's a security system in place.
Okay, and they're paying $100 for the security system and to...
Keeps the building clean, the common areas clean.
Okay, the common area, that, the common area that they're actually using is the stairwell.
Two stairwells and the elevator, they are still using the elevator.
The elevator doesn't go to the...
Doesn't, but very often, you know, if you, if you were to visit the site, you would notice that they take it to the second floor.
Is there a common, is there a common lobby that you, you go out of the lobby thing into the stair?
The stairs go all the way up, and then you enter into the peak wellness, you know, off of the, you know, off of the stairwells.
On the second floor?
The second floor and first floor.
Okay. Is it, does the lobby, or excuse me, does the elevator on the second floor open to a common lobby? Or is it open to the peak wellness space?
Yeah, I don't think that would, it comes into a common lobby for them.
Common lobby for them?
Yeah.
Heating of common stairwells is the same thing, hallways, $50, so this is actually for the stairwells?
There are two stairwells, yes.
Okay. But not the hallways, they don't, because they, they have, if this is going to be a two-bedroom, they share that hallway, so it's part of their base rent, right?
I'm talking about the stair halls, but the hallway on the third floor, that's all, that's all part of the leasehold at that point, the MIDU.
So it's basically not a common hallway, it's actually just for $50 for the stairwell. Same thing with lighting common, just the stairwells.
Stairwells and hallways, yeah.
They don't, they don't use the hallways downstairs, they have their hallway, hallway stairs.
But they still have to get down the stairs into the parking area, which is lit, and, you know, so it's more than just the stairwell.
Okay. Elevator maintenance and usage, they basically, because you're thinking that you're taking the elevator up two flights and then up another flight of stairs.
Right.
Water consumption. Does the tenant pay for utilities now? Electricity, water, that kind of thing?
Is that a separate? Yes, that's a separate, it's a separate number.
Separate utilities paid for directly by the tenant?
By the tenant. Except for water, which is, water is just billed monthly as a common number, it's not a separate meter.
So they don't pay a quarian for water usage?
Correct.
There's no separate meter for the unit?
There's not, there's not a separate meter.
That's what that $40 covers?
Yes.
Okay. And one uncovered parking space, no charge?
No charge.
Where's the one uncovered parking space?
They have one, they have one space.
One space downstairs, outside the building footprint?
It's, yeah, it's on the, it's on the, the lower level.
Okay. I was reading the, I was reading the residential lease agreement that was provided to us. I don't see, I don't see any, any information about the utilities in the lease itself. I'm not too sure how that's put in. I just want to make sure that you understand, actually, as part of this, this tenant, current tenant's got to move out. You understand that?
We're not aware of that, there's a lease in place right now, so I'm not sure.
Well, the current tenant has to comply with the regulations.
It's part, well, it's part of a moderate-income dwelling unit.
Yeah, it's, it's a very frustrating situation, because our records show that we had indicated to the owner that they, you know, explained to them what the process was and they needed to come through, and here was the process, and then, next thing you know, they've signed a lease. So that person is not supposed to be in the unit. Having said that, this has happened a couple of other times in other spots, and, you know, we're not going to evict somebody. However, it's a one-year lease, and yet again, we're going to be pressing upon the property owner that wants, that, that needs to go through the proper procedure. So much so, we would, we can advertise it, you know, five months ahead of time, we can advertise it now. I mean, I understand that the lease runs out in December.
Right.
But, I mean, it's not fair to, to the, to the tier system. It's, it's complete violation of the zoning regulations, and it's not appropriate.
Katie, could we do this? I'm just trying to figure out how to not have this anymore, honestly. Could we do this, that the second bedroom is not approved until the tenant is fully compliant with MID?
I would not use that as a reason to deny this application.
Not denying it, just saying it is approved, effective, the date, subject to, as of the date, that the tenant, the tenant in the location is, has gone through the process, the rent is compliant, blah, blah, blah. So nothing can go forward until it's fully compliant, and that's the condition of the approval?
I think that works.
Okay. We could have probably done this months ago.
Okay. That would have...
But it would still, but it would still be...
So this tenant basically has...
A separate matter, but it's still a violation if this unit isn't offered to town employees and...
So basically...
School, school employees.
I think what you're asking is, the tenant that's in there basically has to leave before that second bedroom can be approved. Is basic, is the bottom line, to your point, Mr. Hardman?
Well, I think they, it's not so much that they have to go through the process, so it's, it's actually possible that this tenant could end up in the unit. Because it's just a matter of advertising it properly, making sure that all of the various priorities have been met, and this, and the current tenant could apply, just like anybody else could.
Correct.
And if there's nobody who's a town employee, et cetera...
On the priority list?
Yeah, on the priority list, it's possible that, that this tenant could end up, and that's actually happened before, in another instance.
I can tell that Mr. Alberto is, is prepared to evict the tenant at the end of the lease, you know, and go through the process.
Well, maybe they, I think that they don't have to.
At the end of the lease.
What Katie just said is, it may work.
Lead B, yeah.
It may work. You get, find out what they're making, and it may work. Okay, so on...
But they, you should come in three, you know, five months ahead of time at least, so that...
The lease expires in December?
End of November.
So you might want to come in next week. Seriously.
To get it sorted out.
And start sorting it out, because no, no building per, no, no building permit, no approval of a second bedroom till it's sorted out and it's all compliant.
So how far in advance can you sign someone up for a lease under this regulation?
Well, you, so you don't sign anybody up under the lease, that's up to the administrator.
How far in advance can you advertise?
You can go through the, you can go through the process with us, you know, at any, at any point, to say it will be available December 1st or whatever the availability date is.
Okay, so once, once the notice has, it's still going through the priority list, and then there are going to be applicants on that priority list or not from the town, and then, I guess, the second tier is a second priority list and then goes to general public.
Correct.
Right, that's the procedure.
Right, and as long as the general public meets the income requirements, it's fine.
Okay. So then, in terms of advertising it for December 1st, it could be advertised as a second bedroom, a two-bedroom unit? I just want to be clear on that.
If you're going to be fully compliant, yeah. If you're fully compliant, you can do it, but you don't get, you don't get the second bedroom until you're fully compliant.
And you would have to obviously note that the second, you know, it's not going to be available December 1st, because you're not going to be able to get the permit, I mean, you'd have to make sure that you don't...
It goes through the whole building permit process, and we won't be able to do that.
Right, because you're going to get the unit compliant first, right.
Does that necessarily have to be that way? I mean, can't, you know, we're just sort of saying the second bedroom can't be occupied until December 1st when a new lease comes. You know, why would we not let that second bedroom be built in the next several months so that somebody could rent this in December as two bedrooms?
Because people do, because stuff happens. Because we lose control of the compliance.
Well, we're, we are, now have a full-time specialist who tracks these units.
Right. I mean, I suppose you could, just to go, pursue your direction, Mr. Hardman, you could issue the zoning permit but not the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, in fact, you'd make the certificate of occupancy...
That sounds reasonable.
I mean, because you've got a timing problem, let's face it. Because if you've got a tenant in there, they're not out until the end of November, then technically you should get the, you know, get the permits at that point, create the second bedroom, and then lease it out.
Yeah, I think these are, I think they're separate issues, one... Yeah, I think these are, I think they're separate issues, one's constructing, and the other is renting.
Okay, so, let's just...
One question is, does the existing tenant want to have, is it in their lease that they're, that they have to have construction in their apartment?
Okay, so...
Well, it's not in your apartment, though.
The construction won't be in their apartment.
This is a storage area right now.
You're going to have to break through, you're going to have to break through.
No, the, there's access now, the issue is the egress windows, I remember, that's what the issue is.
That's correct.
It's the egress window.
Adding that one window.
There's access, so it's only a question of adding the egress window, which is honestly a two-day job, I mean...
Yeah.
Mr. Hardman, I don't, I don't agree with that, that, that thought, I really think that, actually, we need to have more control over this. I think, actually, until this is a compliant unit and meets the requirements, that it's got to be done before the zoning permit's been approved.
So, actually, the applicant, the applicant's agreed to either solution, so why don't we decide that, we, we're, we can leave it as a close, and then we can decide that when, if we decide to vote on it tonight, we can discuss what our condition is of, of approval or denial. Does anybody else have any questions on this application?
I just, actually, I think I may have saved another forty dollars on the common charges. From the residential lease that was given to us, stamped in on the 26th, paragraph 11, representation utilities, the last sentence says the landlord pays for water consumption. Maintenance on your, the common charges you're listing here, and that email says that water consumption is forty dollars. So, maybe, I don't know, landlord pays for water consumption in the lease, but there's a common charge for water consumption, so have to figure that out, because they're...
Right, well, if the landlord pays for it, doesn't it become a common charge, or?
No.
I guess that's the, maybe the, okay.
If it says the landlord pays for it, that means the landlord pays for it.
Okay.
In my book, but we're going to let Mrs. Berry decide that.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And actually, along those lines, because you, you, what was it, 340?
340, yes.
So, that was for the, that's for the one bedroom or for the two bedroom? I just don't want it to be 680 or something like that, I mean...
That's for the two bedroom.
I still would like, I still, one of the things is that we've got to be comfortable that these common charges are consistent with what's being charged other places, and I'm not totally there yet.
Okay, I would also, yeah, I, that's a good point, but I would also ask the commission to look at this individual property, this is not a big project, this is a 4,000 square feet building.
Yeah, but, but you've still got to be, treat all the moderate income people fairly and equitably across town, it isn't by property, you have to treat those moderate income, because they're who you're trying to do something for.
Sure, but don't you want landlords to also be incentivized on smaller properties to create MIDs?
Not if, not if that means that they're charging somebody more than they should be charged.
That's not true, I think you have to look at the economics of, of the individual property.
The point is that a single unit landlord, a different situation than a 40-unit landlord.
But then he shouldn't have made it moderate income, okay?
No, no, I think...
No, the, the moderate income person has to pay a moderate income rent, full stop. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think it says that, though, in the regulation, it's ambiguous, isn't it?
No, well...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
There's no, there's no brackets on what the common charges are.
The maximum...
It's an income regulation.
Right, the maximum monthly rent for one bedroom moderate income dwelling units excluding common charges and utilities, parentheses, gas, oil, and electricity.
But I, I think the proposal isn't out of the blue, I think what Mr. Harper's saying is, it, it, it's a different proposition if you're a single unit landlord versus somebody who's got 10 units and can spread the common charges over.
But that makes it unaffordable for the person you're trying to give an affordable unit to, on a moderate income unit, it makes it expensive. If you're recovering so much in common charges that it's no longer a moderate amount of money that you're charging in total, you're defeating your own objective.
And the, the, in this particular instance, the common tenant, if you will, is a commercial entity, so why is the residence taking the brunt of this? Why doesn't, why doesn't it get transferred to the...
Are there, are there any precedents, either here or in neighboring towns, Katie, that you've seen? I mean, I think we have a whole, in our regulations, that, that kind of led to this ambiguity.
Yeah, that's a very good point, I think that we're going to have to clamp down on common charges.
Right, I did ask...
We're going to have to find out what people do and clamp it down, because obviously...
Make it clear what you want.
It can get weird. So, we got two regulations tonight that people do weird stuff with, okay.
I made that suggestion last time, that, that the common charges be better defined.
We're going to have to make it clear, okay. So, does anybody have, nobody has any other comments? Okay, any members of the public who wish to speak? And is everybody comfortable with closing this and not requesting an extension?
No.
Good.
Okay, all right, and so we close this. Our next application before us tonight is River Road Development LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit at 89 River Road in Cos Cob. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This is a property that you approved a site plan and special permit for in 2016. It had, for a number of reasons, it has not been able to move forward with the rowing club property, proposal that you approved in 2016. The rowing club itself has continued to operate there on, on a seasonal basis with a tent that you've also approved on a regular basis over the last three years.
You wanted to, just while you're mentioning that, you wanted to extend that, when does the tent expire? I forgot to check that, the current...
We have to, you, two years ago, you said you can have it for another year just by submitting it to staff on an administrative level, but if you want to extend it further, which was past November of 2018, if you wanted to bring it back in the spring, you had to renew it in front of the commission.
So, we need to do that now?
Yes. That would be wonderful if you could do that.
Okay, so, because the tent would have to be, I almost wish you had done that somehow separately. Maybe we could do that somehow, because the tent is really, they need to do that in order to be rowing now.
Do you?
Yes.
Yes, because it's expired.
Okay.
And so, they need to get the tent now, if they're going to do spring rowing.
Well, what's the exact date?
November, it expired in November?
Right, it expired, yeah.
Yeah.
And last year, we renewed it through an administrative request for the spring to fall last year.
So, if they're going to start rowing now, which they probably are actually already doing, they need to get that tent reapproved, so that they're good.
It required us to come back to the commission if...
You wanted it to go longer than a year?
If it was going to go longer than another, longer than two years.
Okay.
And this would be the third year.
If you want to go, use the same, if you want to go and use the same language and the same timeframe as the previous, previous approval, I think we could actually...
Just do it administratively?
Why don't we do that, we, the commission then says that the tent can be reviewed separately, and we can break it out from the rest of the applications, so that they can do the spring rowing.
That would be great.
Because it's, from the comments I saw on this, it's going to take a while. There's a lot, it seems like there's a lot of staff comments that need to be addressed. Maybe you'll have all the answers and you'll fix everything in short order, but...
I think separate is a good idea.
Good idea. Okay, so we're going to do that, and we're going to figure out, so we'll do that later tonight, we'll just say that, we'll leave it open, or that you're just... Okay, we'll, we'll handle that.
You could direct staff to handle it on an administrative basis, that would be great.
And so, separating that out, we're done with the tent now, let's talk about everything else.
Good. So, we're proposing a new building under the regulation that you adopted in January of this year. It would retain the rowing club on the first floor as a 7B use, and include 12 apartments on the second and third floors as a 7C use. We will, we meet the height requirements of the 35 feet, the stories of three feet, the setbacks, and the floor area ratio. This building is basically the same footprint as the building that was approved in 2016. Under 6-107E2A, there have to be waterside improvements that are fully developed as part of the 7C use. And we are not only retaining the docks for the rowing club, but we are adding 21 public boat slips, which maximizes the water, waterside usage for the property. We're providing public access, which is required under subsection B. We are increasing the easement to 15 feet wide, which is the requirement under the new regulation, it was smaller under the prior approval, and the ax, the walkway itself, which was eight feet, is increased to 10 feet, which is also the requirement under the new regulation. The lot has to be larger than 20,000 square feet, we're at 59,000 square feet. In a flood zone, which this property is, in the AE 11, there has to be a path from the front door of the building to the street, at least the flood zone elevation of 11, and we accomplish that, actually, in, in two directions. We could have had up to 14 units here, and looking at the building, it didn't seem to work well. We have five two-bedroom apartments on each floor, and one one-bedroom apartment. We could have had 14 rather than the 12 that are submitted, but we do meet the density requirement in the new regulation. And as I said, we meet the three stories and the 35 feet that is part of this new regulation. And lastly, the boat slips are going to be available to the public, not just to the property, the residents of the property. We also connect the public access walk to the properties on the north and south of us, so it's a continuous link, actually, from the water club to the south, all the way through this property to the Brunswick Boathouse immediately to the north. So, it really is one of those things that the commission has been working on for a number of years, and does provide that contiguous, a continuous link along the, the water. The rowing club would be for public use, the, and we've provided a schedule, which we just submitted to staff yesterday. I would say, as I did in my cover letter with that, that is by far the maximum we would expect. We have been operating the rowing program for three years now on the site. We have five adult rowers that participate in the program currently. To say that we would have 25 on a, on a daily basis is probably...
Well, you're going to have, it's hard to predict.
Optimistic, at least. Yes, but we're, we're not anticipating that that would be a major focus as much as providing for the students in the afternoon. We have revised the plan based on the comments at ARC, and I just wanted to show you, this is what we presented to ARC two weeks ago, and John Halper, our architect, has revised the plans. They wanted it to have more of a, a two-and-a-half storying look, rather than a full three-storying look, and to bring the, the roof lines down from the third floor to, through the, the second floor. We had hoped to have that in front of ARC tomorrow night, but it will actually be on, on May 8th, so we would want to go there first, go through that process with them, and then come back to you at one of the meetings in May. DEP had no comments, which, when they have no comments, that's a good thing to have no The zoning enforcement officer wanted us to provide flood vents in the boat storage area, which we certainly will provide and are, are required here. I can have Mr. Halper go through the plans with you, or we can go back to ARC and satisfy them of the changes.
Mr. Hegney, the engineering division provided us comment that they don't review drainage designs for projects that submit a stormwater management standard exemption, an exemption request form. It's my understanding, and hope staff can correct me on this, if I'm wrong, that this is in a commercial zone, WB zone?
Yes.
And I believe that exemptions are, are accepted in a...
So, I actually, I actually ran down Marisa on this today, and apparently, what DPW had decided was that because it's already 100% impervious, this is according to them, okay, that it's 100% impervious, that it would get the drainage exemption, but in fact, it isn't all impervious, because it's gravel, that's the first thing. But apparently, Marisa confirmed that they were giving, that they knew it was commercial, and that they were giving it the drainage exemption today.
Madam Chair, if I could mention, my experience with the engineering division is that if it's gravel, they consider it impervious, because the gravel compacts and acts, just like asphalt.
Go ahead, based on the fact that DPW did that, what are your thoughts? Because I, I still come out, I still come out in the same place I did yesterday, which is this, you're going to tear up the site anyway. Right now, the, the stormwater is basically running into the sound, which is not what I would expect this applicant to be really happy about anyway, since it's their own members that are going to be in that water. And what we would like the applicant, I would like the applicant to consider is to put in at least some sort of filtration or treatment to the stormwater, so that what goes into the sound is cleaner. That's the only, and because the site's going to be open anyway, it should not be a big deal, that's what I would like to see happen.
In the absence of Mr. DeAndrea, who asked if he could go home early tonight, I will say he has developed a good plan, because what he has done is created a stormwater infiltration system in the center, so that the, the parking lot itself drains to the center from both sides. And that whole big area that's outlined here, that's all a detention basin for filtration and...
It didn't seem consistent with the nature of this application, that they wouldn't want to treat and filter.
So, what happens is the, the roof leaders all feed into that as well, as well as the, as the pitch.
I should have looked at it, I'm sorry, because I didn't look at it.
And then it comes to a level spreader off to the side, so there's both water quality and, and...
For everything, even the stuff coming off of it?
And thermal pollution treatment before it enters the sound.
Even the stuff coming off the roof?
Yes.
Is going to go through, before it gets to the spreader, it's going to go, okay, I didn't even look at that part, I'm very sorry.
It all goes into that large detention basin in the center, and everything pitches down to that.
That's great, okay.
Mr. DeAndrea does think about these things.
It's great, but I, what's interesting to me is that actually, everything flows to the center, and it gets filtered and all that, but we have a sea of asphalt in the front of this building.
Ah, next thing.
There's no, I mean, and the asphalt actually goes right up to the front of the building, right up to the facade.
I, I had heard yesterday, there was discussion on a particular type of system called silver cells, and I actually have some experience with this, because I was doing a building at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue, where it was a building that Rudy Ridberg did on the east side, right at the end, where the Thaddeus Cafes dining area was. And at the time, there was concern about root compaction, particularly on Greenwich Avenue, and, you know, the, the oak trees that seemed to grow their roots more out of the ground than in the ground, and how do you deal with that? And those trees that were planted in front of that building have been planted with silver cells.
And?
They seem to be... They seem to be thriving. So we are certainly prepared to use that kind of system here and to address the issue that came up in front of ARC, to add more trees in the parking lot itself.
Because what we started talking about is that, one of the things that we wanted to do with the WB, and we were looking at the regulations as we changed them, is to have that view shed so that this is part of the public enjoyment of the water. And hopefully, ARC will address that. Maybe you want to comment on the view shed as well. But...
Yes.
The part of, as, I hate to keep talking about the POCD that hasn't been approved yet, but part of that process is showing us that what people really value is the greenscape. And what people want to see is, when they have a view, that it include green. So this idea of having, as you look out on the water, to have that parking, that area be as planted and be as green and as welcoming would be a real plus.
And the owner is looking to do that as well.
Again, it would seem consistent with what this applicant is proposing to do. Dennis, did you want to say something?
Well, yeah, but I think a couple of this. I was just curious, that I love waterfront property, and I've been in a lot of them. Usually, they take the building, everybody a water view. And this one only gives one side of the building a water view. I was just wondering what the idea there was, because I would think commercially, you could get higher rents or something if everybody had a water view. And this one, half the units don't have water views.
How would you accomplish that?
Turn the building.
I'd like John Halper, our architect, to talk about that because I've seen many different designs that he has prepared. Perhaps, John, why don't you walk the commission through the, how you develop this particular plan?
Fine. John Halper, Halper Architects, Commission. So, obviously, that's a great question. You know, we went through a lot of iterations to really maximize the waterfront units. And what we, what we developed was, what we developed was, in this particular configuration, we've got three units per floor that are directly viewing the river. They're parallel to the river. Plus, we've got these two corner units that have balconies with a view out at the river. And so there's really only one unit per floor, two units total, that have no river views. This layout maximized the proximity to the river with the most units versus rotating it where you only get perhaps two end units with close proximity to the river. And all the other units would have flanking views. And one side or the other would be, with those apartments, would be looking out over the parking lot towards the river. So we made the determination that this was actually, this was the most efficient and provided the optimum number of units with water views and really feel like you're on the water. We actually had other, earlier iterations that had seven apartments per floor, which we were entitled to. And the units weren't as nice, but we could rack up, you know, four or five not-so-great apartments along the river there.
So... I've seen it done differently. Obviously, it's your architectural direction, but I've seen it done, you're counting two over here as having, get, when you turn the building, you'd have the same analogy. I mean, you would have the, all those units would be able to see a river view too. If your analogy was the corner units do have a review, you turn it, then all six would have a review.
Correct.
All right.
I understand. But what I, we were trying to maximize the units that really feel to be on the river. And I understand that you caught me on those two corner units.
Correct.
That are not. But now, originally, those two corner units, we go back, the balconies were interior space where the living space extended, and there was actually a window looking out at the river. But we elected to pinch the building to get more, just open space towards the, towards the river from the street. So we felt that if we just had an open balcony, we could accomplish most of what we're looking for.
Mr. Halper, the new WB regulations actually want to address view shed from the offsite, from the street. One of the things that we had talked about, and actually, it's in the, in the regulations, is a situation where you're minimizing, actually creating a expanse of building that actually cuts the view of the water from passersby's on the street, people who live across the street. Again, to Mr. Yaski's thought of actually turning the building sideways would actually offer you a larger view shed to the river for people who actually don't even live on the property.
That would, that would be, that would be the logical conclusion, but that's not what happens with this particular site. Because we've got two neighbors that are at the street, very close to the street, and as we rotate our building, our face gets much closer to the street. So the view sheds get pinched, and they are, I can't really even say that they're better. They, and they may, I don't even, they're not better.
Can you supply to us, actually, I want to know about...
We'll, we'll provide the same, this question came up at the last application. And we did provide specific view angles, and John is putting that together as well. We'll provide those to you.
What I'd like to see, actually, on Mr. DeAndrea's, one of Mr. DeAndrea's map, is you've got the, this layout. I'd like to know specifically what's happening on both properties in map format. And I want to see, actually, the building rotated 90 degrees in that, that same kind of scenario. Because I really, it's in our regulation, and I really want to make sure that we're doing this right. A building, you want a building that's three stories tall, right on the river, that's now, again, blocking off the river to everybody else.
The same question came up when we came to you with the building in 2016. We did provide that same analysis, but John's been working on that, and we'll have that for you prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
I think ARC wants to see that too, so that's why we've been working on it.
The fill situation, it seems you've got about six feet of fill in the, on the property. I'm wondering if that can be minimized and we maintain the existing grade to keep the building down lower in relationship to the street. I know you need, you require the path to be out of the flood zone or leaving two areas out of the flood zone, but there is a natural slope from the street down towards the seawall. It would seem to me, actually, you're meeting, you're meeting the height of the building, but starting above, above...
We're in the, we're in the AE 11 flood zone. Our first floor is at 12.25. We can lower it an inch or two, but we can't lower the first floor any more than that.
Of the residents?
Of the, of the rowing club.
Where the boats go?
Yeah.
No, 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 not the boat storage area. I'm talking about the first floor of the rowing club. So the offices and the lavatories. I don't think we can lower it any lower than that. Most of the people that I represent that are building in a flood zone try to elevate it more, thinking that FEMA's gonna increase the flood elevation to them again. But as a commercial building, we do have the ability to floodproof. But I don't think, from a more practical standpoint or from a common sense standpoint, we want to go down below the elevation 12, which would be the required first floor elevation in the AE 11.
We were talking a lot about, actually, what's happening on this site. This is actually, in my view, actually, a much more intense use of this site. We've got the boathouse uses, which we've looked at before, classes, pickup, drop-off, that kind of thing. But we're adding in, actually, a couple of more different twists to this now. We have actually, rolling facilities open to the public. You have 21 public boat slips. Actually, what size would they accommodate? What kind of boat? Just a motorboat, or do you get, can you get something?
Oh, no, because I kept my boat there when it was Mackenzie Marine, because it was an Albin. Still is an Albin. Different kind of Albin.
It's spelled differently.
Yes, it is.
I think it's perfect.
And there were, there were 35, 36-foot boats there.
So we get maybe a 35-foot boat in there, they get the rolling facility, and you have now six units.
Twelve. Six per floor.
You're right, 12. So that starts to make me think, okay, so we've got all kinds of things happening on the site, all at the same time. I got public boat slips, I've got residences, I've got classes, I've got all kinds of crazy things. The other issue was actually, something that came up was movement of trucks on this site, and actually, in two things. One, deliveries for the residences, which wasn't added in the last time. And I think actually, moving the shells around on trucks to bring them to the site or away from the site as needed. I think what we really need to do is, we need to have a really good updated traffic analysis for this, to really take a look at how the mix of all of this is gonna happen at the same time. It would seem to me that you had provided us with some class times and all that stuff, and we had PM juniors pickup and drop-off, that kind of thing, at night. Approximately, I would think, at the same time, is actually people who are living there coming home at the same time. You'll have use of the rolling facility all the time, even on weekends, you know, the public boats, public boat slips are gonna be used specifically on weekends. So there's a lot of things moving on this site all day, all night, that kind of thing. I think we need to do a real significant update of the traffic analysis to encompass the boat slips, the classes, the residences, truck movements, all of that kind of stuff.
As you mentioned, we did have a full traffic report from Frederick P. Clark Associates. We can certainly ask them to prepare an updated analysis based on the different uses. We are following the new regulations, so that's why we're maximizing the number of boat slips in the water. That's why we're looking at adding apartments to provide the economy...
That's, and I understand that, that's great, so...
...that supports the rowing program onsite, which was one of the issues that we had dealing with the last plan that has not been built. So we recognize and appreciate that the commission saw that there was a need to provide more, more assistance to provide these water-dependent uses. And, and that's what we're trying to do with this plan. But I, your point is well taken.
So here we are, the first example under the new regulations, so let's make sure that we get it right, and that, that those things that we intended and are done correctly. And that we're not assuming the old regulation, but making sure the new regulation works.
And that's what our goal is as well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I also remember on the last one, parking was an issue, and I see you put a schedule in here, right? Are you gonna, and I noticed you said that you're not sure, you, the max here is like 100, I guess it means 100 rowers?
Those are for the juniors, and most of them would be coming by bus.
Got it. Were you planning, I don't know what you call it, I'm a sailor, regattas, what is a rower, one of rowers?
Not, same thing, it's still a regatta, it's just no sails, no sails here.
How you don't crash into each other? I've been...
Little mirrors.
You have mirrors?
Yeah.
Rowers have mirrors on their roads?
I suspect the town planner can enlighten you on this to a great extent.
We have a resident expert here, for sure.
We have a master's rower here, we know that.
But the parking was an issue the last time, and, so are you having regattas? I'm sorry.
Not here, no. We will pick up boats on trailers and take them to regattas. And we will provide a turning radius plan to show that an SU-30 can access the site for deliveries, and that the boat trailers themselves can also enter and exit the site. And that's part of what we're doing with the, the plan that Mr. DeAndrea developed. The footprint of the building and the parking layout is very, very close to what we had last time.
It was an issue the last time, though, wasn't there?
No, we showed, we did provide you with a traffic circulation plan that showed how the trailers came in and out.
We didn't have residences the last time.
That's the last thing, we would like you to update, we would like you to update.
No, they, but I was talking really just about the turning radiuses themselves. From the traffic analysis standpoint, yes, we have to add that in as part of the...
So you're gonna update it for us versus the last application?
Yes.
Okay.
But do you think you're inconformity on the parking, the way you laid it out here? 78 parking spaces, 10 for boat slips. How many boat slips are there again?
21.
That's half, that's, you know, 12 parking spaces for...
For the apartments.
Right.
Two are required for public parking, for the public access.
And 54 for the rest of the club.
Right.
And I'm just curious, do you think, when you come back with this updated plan, you think that's gonna be in conformity to our regulations?
In conformity to the regulations and something that will work well, actually, probably better than what we had before.
So you're not looking for...
Cool.
Yeah, no, that is, because I remember last time, there was something, I can't remember.
Because there was a concern, when we were talking about it yesterday, just about the peak times where the people might not have left their units.
Yes, and that, that was...
The morning rowers are coming in.
That was, there was two, I think the concern was there was too tight a time between one group leaving and one group arriving, and we'll be dealing with that as well.
Well, actually, what, I think Katie raised this yesterday, go ahead. I think what you mentioned was that the residents in the, in the units might not have left when the morning rowing crew, when Katie arrives.
That's the last page of the...
At 5:30 in the morning.
5:30 in the morning, yeah.
It's not number of vehicles, it's, sorry, Dennis.
But you'll have to lure her over there.
It's the number of...
It's the parking demand, and the peak was at, you know, 8:00 AM was 47, 9:00 AM was 50.
Right.
So, right in that time period.
And we have 78, so I think we, I think we have to look at the separation between one group arriving or leaving and one group arriving, so that there is no overlap of those, recognizing that many of the residents probably are not up at that hour.
Right. And actually, I was gonna say, along those lines, the kids, the kid operation that comes, that's mostly in the afternoon hours, right?
It's all in the afternoon hours, except on Saturdays.
And would that be a restriction, or is that just the way it's proposed now? I know many asks, because of noise and that kind of thing, but it's...
It would just be afternoons.
Okay.
What, all day Saturday? Anytime Saturday?
I think we have it also for them in the afternoon, but it's 1 o'clock to 4:30, rather than after, a little after 3:00.
On Saturdays?
On, it would be 1:30 to, to, 1:30 to, 1 to 5:30 on Saturdays.
So just out of curiosity, is this gonna be constructed in such a way that you won't hear loud music or whatever? I mean, or is it just normal residential construction? Or is it just normal residential construction?
John? I think we would do, you know, sound attenuation between the units and the floors. So, you know, the club, if there is music going on in the club, it's not going up and vice versa.
I mean, it does make sense to do something like that. Just when you've got a mixed use like that.
You know, I don't know, it's funny about noise. I think actually if we're having classes at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, I would say that probably all of the, on a, you know, nice spring day, summer day, all the residents are there and they have the sliding doors open.
Well, they've also got to recognize when they move into the place.
Yeah, that's, that's, it gets a little funny to me because it would seem to me as like, okay, I've got all these kind of crazy uses, people running out there with their boats and everything. If I had a boater, if I was a boater and wanted one of these units and I got a slip at the same time, that makes total sense. But the average person is not going to do that, right? They're going to like, yeah.
These crazy people are going to show up at 5:00 in the morning, I'd be worried about the noise of those people.
Yeah.
It says here you start at 5:30, someone's going to be banging on the door at 5:00.
I have direct information that for one thing, they're not crazy and that they are not loud.
That's your opinion.
Some of those people work with us and trust us, you gotta be crazy.
A R C had some other comments too, which I've never seen. The water facing facade is too vanilla. It's too vanilla.
Yeah, that was too.
That was, yeah, I really don't even understand that comment.
Well, so you're going to address it. What they're saying is that it's too plain, I believe you spoke with.
Yeah, but I think that.
Nick was trying to figure, make sure we got it clear.
I think if you looked at it, you would probably think it was the opposite, that it's maybe too busy.
But Nick spoke with.
What I found is they're, just getting their comments up here.
But you know, we're moving past that.
Yeah, I know, we're moving past that, but I want to make sure that you actually, as you move past it, you don't go beyond it. You really kind of take a look at it. Because there's two sides to it. Here's the water side and what does that look like? How does that affect everybody passing by the water? Same, same on the street side. What was interesting to me is that actually your initial building, to me, okay, had some interesting thoughts to it. It needed to be kind of thought out a little bit because there was a lot of different things to happen all at the same time. Maybe some polishing minimized some of the detail, but everything, things are starting to work out. I'm finding with this one, just at face value, when I actually take a look at it, it's actually even more complicated. And that it may not be as successful as you think because maybe some of the roof lines are going to be very convoluted up there. You've got, I think elevators or shafts, there's some kind of an odd.
It's not resolved.
Yeah, those kind of issues. So I think one of the things that they were talking about was actually, it said it was monumentally overbuilt for the site and recommended that we find a way to break down the massing. To me, I think actually they're just saying, that's their way of saying it's just way too big. How, what can you do to make it smaller? To me, that's saying, yeah, it's too big, take a couple of units out and make it smaller. I think facing the vanilla side of that water side, I think it's more of actually what is the interest on that side? You have, yes, utilitarian issues in the club, but is it all balcony that's coming off on that side because of all the units are actually, the units that are facing the water have these big expenses of. The rowing club identity on the waterfront, you know, how do you know that it's an actual rowing club there other than it's, you've got maybe some shells in the yard? So, and again, they also talk about the orientation of the building here, so. And I think maybe they even suggested actually rotating the building 90 degrees and see how that would look, so.
And that's why we started with the view, the sightlines and what the view sheds would be. And John's working on that, we'll have that for A R C.
They were looking at us for site sections from the water through to the, okay.
Yep.
I'd like to suggest, I'd like to see actually, as part of that view shed, information is actually, if you can give us a section that goes through a portion of the site that actually includes the buildings adjacent to this one as it is. So we really can see, in a sense, actually, what is the, what is this separation between the buildings on either side of the property and this one?
They were actually looking for north, south and east, west sections. And they wanted us to expand the section to show the topography of the road because as you go south, River Road does rise up. So they want us to expand that more and that's what John's putting together now.
So, you know, I checked in with them afterwards and they said that they thought they were being, that they weren't really beating you up, so the intent was not to beat you up. We had been asking them to be very clear in comments how they viewed whether a building was consistent with neighborhood and whether it fit and it met the provisions of the special permit. And I think they were going out of their way to make that clear this time. But it was not their intent to bash you. They actually didn't seem to think that they had, but.
It was fine.
Okay.
Well, I'm the A R B in Westport, so I get to get it from the other side.
Oh, yeah, you get that, yes, I have comments on you guys, okay, so, yeah.
One other issue, I think actually, something to keep in mind, that maybe you can actually disregard keeping the building in the same footprint in the same place. It doesn't, does it really need to be, does it really need to be what was previously proposed? Can it be different? Should it be different? To really kind of say, wait a minute, yeah, we're going to do this right and actually, we're going to see the water, we're going to enjoy the water, we're going to make our building really relate to both sides of the water side and the street side at the same time. If it's disregarding the footprint of what was there before, so be it.
Yeah, I mean, I've played around with dozens of things. I'd like to put the building on, you know, 30 foot stilts so you could look underneath it and have the apartments up high. That's not going to fly, right? And we've got a water dependent use and the rowing facility works much better parallel to the river with direct access. So that's working against the view shed idea. And the apartments really are working. We have schemes that rotated at 90 degrees. The parking gets bifurcated, it's not efficient. It's, it just, there's too many things going against it. We'll show you that.
Previous schemes, actually, start with A R C. If you've got, if you've got the napkin sketches still in your schematic designs, I think actually they would appreciate actually seeing that to see actually where you started with and how you got to this point. We'd like to see them too, but, you know, start with A R C because I think they can really now see your design intent and why you wound up in the same place at the same size.
Explain what the thought process was getting, as developed and getting.
You got it. You know what they're trying to do. I know Westport's special permit has got the same stuff you're used to dealing with that. You know what they're looking for and we'll let you march with them. Well, okay, but all you architects deserve each other, that's how I take it.
She meant that as a compliment.
No, not really, because he's an architect.
Everybody on the bus, that's it.
And the last application, you talked about the kids carpooling and whatnot. You didn't mention in this one, you're going to come back with that information.
We'll come back with that more developed in terms of how it's going to be handled.
We're good.
I'm sorry.
Quick question, sorry. The marina boats, not the rowing boats, so the ones I don't know anything about. So the marina boats, you don't need to have obviously somebody to, the ability to pick the boat up and take it out of the water, right? In the boating world, you can just go down to the public area and get your boat out that way? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of making this a clean marina, you know, the D E P, clean marina, do you need to have any sort of like clean out facility or anything for these boats?
I'm not sure, you mean a pump out facility?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And then lastly.
Because, well, I'm trying to think, Grass Island, the public portion of Grass Island. I don't think they have a pump out there and there are quite a few boats.
Yeah, this is true. The public marina, that, does that have, are there facilities, bathroom facilities and whatnot in the building that the public marina people can use or?
Haven't quite thought about that, but we'll, we'll come back with you.
I was just thinking is the most basic facility for them? As opposed to like lockers and sharing all that stuff?
While we're on suggestions, do you remember that somebody came in about the channel? These boat slips, they're out in the channel a little bit more, right? They stick out. Somebody came in and talked about there was some problem with putting things in the channel or something.
There is, they, the Army Corps of Engineers will frown upon you putting your floats and docks in the, in the channel line, no. We, it had to do with the extension of the rowing dock and it was too close to the channel line and we brought it back. Yeah, that was the Harbor Management Commission commenting on it.
Just trying to help.
Yeah, that's, no, I, no, we, we know that, that that's an issue and I'm not sure if Mr. DeAndrea shows.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's on the zoning location survey.
You're not yelling at me for not moving the meeting.
It shows where the slips are, actually the west side of the channel.
Yeah, he shows the channel line in here, so. We do have to, we do have to abide by that because that's, that's a federal issue.
At the risk of pushing the meeting, I have a question, I wonder if you could help maybe somebody. We're trying to understand why developers build certain kinds of units, right? When I ask you about the tilt of the building, is there any guidance you can give us between the rent differential between the water side and the non-water side? Because it also, I mean, we don't have any water side developments. We have other apartments in town, that kind of thing, and we're kind of looking at the model behind them. But is there a huge spread between the water side rent and the non-water side rent?
I can't speak to that, I don't know if.
But we can try to get some information on it.
It has nothing to do with the regulations, it's just, you know, we get these larger and larger projects that have very unique economics and we're trying to understand them, that's all.
We'll, we'll do some research.
Because I thought that's why people tilt the buildings, they, they could charge a lot more. Even if, you know, I've been, we've all been in hotels, they say you have an ocean view. Yeah, right, if you stand on the table and look out over the balcony, you can see a little bit of ocean. But I'm still paying almost the same as ocean view, so I was just curious.
We'll, we'll put mirrors out so that it'll reflect from the water there.
When you're rowing, you can look at a mirror on your rows? I didn't know that.
A final question, and I wasn't part of the commission when this first came through. In less than two minutes, what does this facility do for the image, image, the sort of attraction of Greenwich as a rowing center? Converting from a tent to a permanent facility?
Row America has other rowing programs, Sawgatuck in Westport, in Rye. That's it right now. And of course, you have two other rowing facilities on the river, the Water Club and Brunswick right next door. So it, it's certainly an active, growing sport that particularly at the school level creates a lot of interest. And we're expecting that it would, that this would help growing that, that type of interest.
Oh, yeah. It is, but you often need hip surgery too.
So you can actually get into college saying I was a rower rather than my parents paid it, paid for me to be a rower.
You have certification that you were a rower. That might be worth college admission.
Okay, we're starting to digress. Let's move the show on the road. So you guys are good, marching orders, come back when you're ready. Thank you for the accommodation on the trees and I'm thinking through the view shed.
We're, we're working on it.
Good. I like where this is going.
Thank you.
If I may say, a very nice project for the first one under the new regulations.
Yes.
Yeah. Okey dokey. And with that, we have our last application of the evening. Why do I, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. He had you blocked, I'm so sorry. Yes, sir, public comment. And take your time, because.
That's all I can do with this app.
No, it's all we can do too. Did you notice, did you notice that our minds were starting to drift?
Not anymore. My name is Fred Whalen.
Hello.
I live directly across the street from this project.
And were you the person that they referenced that they were trying to accommodate neighbors? No?
I don't know. I really don't know. I've always appeared here before with an attorney regarding this property. Jane Holgerman, Diane Fox, Jimmy Sandy were friends of mine. At any rate, I came because I wanted to hear what counsel was going to say. This is a different project.
Yes.
Than the prior project, which I approved, which I was in favor of, which I asked Mr. Hegney to tell you that I was in favor of it. But this project is a different project altogether. Apples and oranges. The prior project was an apple and I was in favor of it. This is an orange. And I'm, I've got some reservations. I was going to ask, and I tried to reach Tom today to see if he would, I want to hire an attorney to review this whole project. And I am going to hire Chip Haslam, I've already talked to him. The only problem was he couldn't see me today because he was in Hartford with John Wentmore on another zoning matter. So I am, I am, I am going to see him in a few days. I was going to ask for basically a post-broman of this, Harry.
You're going to have plenty of time because they're going to go back to the Architectural Review Committee and they are not seeing them tomorrow. They are seeing them in two weeks, I believe.
Okay.
And so then after they've gotten them happy, then they'll come back to us. So you've probably got a month?
Yeah.
Easily.
That's fine, I appreciate that.
So to look at the plans, you'll just have to stay on top of it because the design is going to change because the Architectural Review Committee had a lot of comments that we were discussing. They didn't like how it presented overall, they thought it was massive.
Okay.
But that may, so they're going to try to find a solution with the Architectural Review Committee? You've got the time and just make sure you know what the plans that are coming back to us look like.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, and I'm sorry.
Tommy has been very helpful.
Tommy has been helpful.
Tom Hegney has been very helpful to me, he really has been. He's a friend of mine.
That's good.
I've known him for years. But the fact is, he's been very helpful to me in sending the plans and so forth and so on.
So they'll send you, it sounds like they're trying very hard to work with the community. So they'll send you, as they change this design, they'll let you know what's going on with it?
That's fine.
Because I was actually surprised, normally we get more people from the neighborhood and I didn't even see you.
I'm the only guy in the neighborhood, they're right across from me.
Yeah, okay.
Right across from me.
Normally the River Road people come, but in any event, yes, so I'm sure that they'll keep you informed and it is going to evolve.
I'm the only one directly affected by this project. Be clear about that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Whalen.
Well, you're quite welcome, Ms. Albin. I remember you from years ago.
Yeah, way down the road, right?
Yes, that's right, yeah. Well, thank you and I, I'll continue to work with Tom on it. I'm going to have Chip get in touch with him and talk to him about it. And by the way, these people have been wonderful neighbors.
Great, that's great.
They've been wonderful neighbors.
Great. I'm thanking you, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Fred had called me a month or so ago and asked for copies of the plans, which I did send to him.
Sure he does.
Told him we'd continue to work with him.
Yeah, I think it'll be confusing if you give him all the iterations. Okay, so we've left that application open or are you willing, are you going to make a closing statement?
Unless you want to approve it tonight, I was going to leave it open.
You've got, I think we've discussed everything that needs to be done going forward.
We know the work we have set out to do and we'll get it done.
Okay. All right, okay, so we're leaving that open and nobody has any objection? And.
One of those nights. It keeps swinging till you hit something.
The mills and there was a thing you could double overtime if you.
Thank you.
Work three shifts and, I hope you can.
Not, not something to say why my client, well, my clients are still here, but I appreciate the thought.
Our next application is Serenity 2 LLC. Our next application is Serenity 2 LLC, Final Site Plan and Special Permit, 19 Deer Park Meadow Road. Would you like us to do this quickly? Would you like to open, Mr. Hegney?
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant, we would ask for your approval of this special permit site plan for a single-family house on 1.7 acres in the one-acre zone.
That's it?
I can, I can speak longer, but.
You have submitted a landscaping plan now, which you had not done previously. It is before conservation at the moment. They have not had a chance to comment on it. They were concerned about tree protection and.
Yeah, I, I did want to speak to that issue. My client has spent millions of dollars buying this piece of property. They will spend millions of dollars building this house. To think that they would not spend a significant amount of money to beautify it with landscaping is, would not be the case.
Do you know that's becoming less the issue? The issue is really more nowadays that we're concerned about the type of landscaping that goes in, that it be sustainable in nature, that it be respectful of the natural environment. It's really, I, I'm sure your client is going to do beautiful things, but our concern nowadays is to have conservation, look at it, native species, deep-rooted trees, meadow where possible, where it works for the client. That's really the concern. We understand people are going to do a beautiful job, but it's a question of not being irrigation-intensive, et cetera.
This is a lot in an old subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Not that Deer Park thinks of itself as a subdivision, but.
It is.
In a, in a wonderful community. It's a corner lot. There are certain requirements and rules that Deer Park has that you have to meet, which we have submitted this to them for their approval, which.
No objections.
Which we do have. Cormac Burn, our architect, is here this evening. You know, I, I was just looking at what trees are going in. There are 52 evergreens between 12 and 20 feet. There are seven six-inch caliper trees, four seven-inch caliper trees, two eight-inch caliper trees.
So could I?
And as you can see from the landscape plan, there are many native species that are part of it, so.
If the commission is comfortable with this, we could have it subject, you know, we could just say that conservation has to review it and endorse it and make any appropriate comments prior to zoning permit. Or you're nodding, you're making a funny face.
I mean, on.
Just in the. What we just said, sustainability, native species, you know, where can we do stuff that's more respectful of the natural environment, the kind of stuff that.
So I guess along those lines, if just, just to hash this out a tiny little bit.
And trees.
Yeah, so it's, it's really.
Well, we've done before.
So there's the highly manicured landscaping.
Not looking so much for that.
Right. That's, I guess, the point you're trying to make.
But again, it's private property.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, the extent that Alexandra can influence, but it is private property, I mean.
And the other thing I wanted to point out, oftentimes when we're dealing with this, there are wetlands involved. This property does not have wetlands. There are coastal issues and coastal properties involved that you want to have certain protections and species.
You know, the real issue is, we're just talking to people who are telling us that over and over again, these, these beautifully manicured properties that are just the sustainability just isn't there because the irrigation need is so high, et cetera. So what we just want you to do is to go over it with Alexandra, get her comments and where your client is willing to do it.
Prior to getting the zoning permit sign off.
The, to the right of the pool, I guess, that's, what is that now? Is that woods or is that?
This, this area is, the, the prior owner tore down the house and essentially clearcut the lot.
And is, is it just a vacant lot still?
It's just a vacant lot.
Yeah. How long ago was that?
Recently. Yeah, six or seven months ago.
Was it, was it a wooded area or?
It, it, it had a house on it and.
And trees.
And trees and.
Right.
The neighborhood was not happy about what the prior owner did.
Yeah, that's what we've gathered. So that's the thing.
And it was important for us to reach out, have a landscape plan, have our architect deal with them to get them to sign off.
Cormac Burn with Jones Burn, Martin Judd as partners. Good evening, everybody. And we also worked for the previous owner before the, the lot changed hands and he did, took the house down and took down a lot of trees.
Should not have let him do that.
But there are a lot of trees that are, that are within the Deer Park Association that are protected. They're all individually.
Within the association.
Yes, they're all individually tagged and they're all remained. So he did what was, you know, there's no tree ordinance on a lot of the time he took the house down.
No, no, we don't have a tree ordinance, but we're trying hard to.
Yes.
Get people to work with us.
We are working very closely with the association. The head of the association is our next-door neighbor and so we're, he's very keenly involved and has reviewed our landscape plan.
Good.
And we won't sneak anything behind him, yes.
That's good. Because that's really important. I mean, that's what the feedback we're just getting from conservation is just this kind of highly manicured approach is this is not sustainable in the long term in terms of the water, the water usage, et cetera, and, you know, all that. So if we could ask you that, then you have some minor comments from the Z E O. You've got to open up the pool house. You know, the knee, the knee walls, we've talked about this a million times.
I actually have the plans because Cormac sent them to me today. Two walls are open. The areas to the, to the sides, this area here and this area here, we are counting toward our F A R, but this is all open. It had a wall with a chimney on one side that's been removed.
As long as your walls aren't more than knee-high, you're good, that, that the restriction is knee-high walls.
Took those out.
Yeah.
The, it's.
And kill the kitchenette.
It's a, it's a wet bar and the note, although you can't, can't read it, it says that it has to have an under counter refrigerator, certain side, 250 square inch.
You got it.
Sink.
Yeah.
No above counter cabinets.
Okay.
There was one other, there's one other issue.
That's all I've got here.
Why are you thinking about that? What was, what's the garden?
Why are you thinking about that?
That has.
Oh, the walls at the driveway. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Katie.
Yeah, oh, the walls of the driveway, you're right.
Have to be at three feet and Cormac said that, that, that's also an issue for Deer Park.
Restrictions three feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that, what's that other garden?
So.
Top one on the sheet.
In the back, in the back corner, there's an existing, it looks like, you mean back in the very bottom left corner of property?
No, this would be in the.
Like the oval.
Extreme west side, here. This one here.
Yeah.
So it's not fully developed, but the idea was that it was a lawn area with a walkway and maybe some furniture, but it's a, it's a lot, yeah.
Why, why are they, were they going to build a new house or what?
I mean, the original client that I, that I, we were hired by was intending to build a new house and we got fairly far into the design process and then, I think, he didn't like all of the control that the Deer Park Association was sort of trying to impose on him, so he decided just take the house down and sell it. Our current owners are much more in, you know, working with the neighbors.
So he, the house wasn't down at that point? He decided he tore it down at the last minute?
He was.
We were working, no, no, we were working towards, you know, our approvals, so.
The house was up and everything was there and you were trying to get big approvals?
Yep.
But then he stopped and said, I've had enough. He tore the house down, cleared, cut the lot and sold it.
And sold it, yeah, in a day.
Wow. So I mean, we're just trying to understand why someone would clearcut something. Was that, so was it just like a personal thing or?
I think clearcut's a bit, it's a little bit overstated. It's, there's, there's a, there's a perimeter of trees around the whole property.
So was it, it was, was it like a benefit?
But they belong to Deer Park.
Better way to sell the property was to have this.
In his mind, it, it's a very, it's a pretty large property. Couldn't necessarily see the whole depth of the property.
Gotcha.
It also had a little bit of a grade change, so taking the house down kind of leveled it a little bit.
1.73.
And it works, he sold it.
Yeah.
But we're, you know, we're, we have a really extensive landscape plan. This place is going to look pretty spectacular when it's done.
I think it's like, but you know where we're going with it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think if the association is happy, even better yet, if you could let us know. Maybe that neighbor could send in a memo, you know, whatever, to staff, because we're going to just ask that you work with conservation.
Sure, that, that's fine. We're happy to do that.
Okay. Anything else? Any members of the public? No, he's not going to speak against you.
I don't think so.
Oh, my God, everybody, he should.
He should have been there with you.
Yeah.
Yes, he does.
Okay, so this one is closed, if everybody's agreeable to that?
Sure.
Everybody's agreeable to closing and so ends the public hearing. Okay, and so we've got some stuff to do, folks. How would you like to start, Mr. McRae?
Uh, hold on one second, let me look here. Okay, so we actually have, going backwards.
Okay, wait, Yeski's going to do the minutes. Oh, he's looking for them. I stuffed them under his nose and he said he could, blah, blah, blah.
Just give me the date.
Oh, I don't know. That was so many hours ago.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Nick. Oh, Nick left. Somebody go ahead. Yeah, no, Nick wandered away. No control around.
I'm just going to make sure we've got, we're, I got the right ones here. Okay, so.
Okay, where's my, okay, okay. So you want to start with?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, wait, wait, wait. Okay, so we just closed, we just closed.
Serenity 2, number 11, you want to just do that one?
Okay, hold on.
Oh, you know what, I forgot.
Okay, while you're thinking of it.
Bianca, which is the application that has the historic buildings on it that they were going to tear down?
That was a, excellent, but they're not here.
Okay.
Okay, just make sure, okay, so we, actually, Serenity was closed. River Road is still open.
Uh-huh. River Road is open. Tiffany, we closed.
Tiffany's closed.
Parker Stacy, we closed. But I'm thinking we should wait.
Parker Stacy 8 was closed.
And 7 is open and on 8, I would recommend that we not vote that one tonight and that we just make sure that we know what.
7 open.
Regulation applies. 7 is open and that's it.
Okay.
Well, Katie, I, I do want to talk a little bit later. Let's go backwards and then when we get to 8.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
I kind of.
It's clear what regulation applies, that's the.
I know what regulation applies, so I'm not sure that we really, okay.
Okay, for application P L P Z, for application P L P Z 2019-00064 and 2019-0065, for Final Site Plan and Special Permit for the construction of a new residence in excess of 150,000 cubic feet at 19 Deer Park Meadow Road in the RA1 Zone, whereas the pool house has been adjusted to eliminate F A R and has been opened up on the third side. The applicant has testified that the walls and columns near the driveway entrance will comply with Section 6140 and they have testified actually that the homeowners association's limits are actually even more strict than that, that the kitchenette area in the pool house has been revised to limit it to a wet bar. The engineering division has a resub, resubmit prior to zoning permit.
To address concerns on, to address concerns raised in the report.
Okay. Since that the dismissal was not forward for engineering staff for full review of the time.
It's number three, it's point three.
The journey summary report is acceptable in concept regarding the type of the B N Ps proposed. A full review of the report will be completed with the zoning building permit review and they address actually some initial comments, so on and so forth.
Okay, so just to address those.
Okay. The applicant will submit the, or has submitted the landscape plan to the zoning, or to the Conservation Commission staff for review. They will work with the Conservation Commission staff to see if we can, if they can make the landscape plan as proposed more sustainable in terms of plantings, meadows, open areas to address any kind of overtaxing of the irrigation and water usage of the, the site. They'll, should have that, that should be resolved prior to zoning permit. It is noted that the head of the association has looked at the landscape plan and has endorsed it. The commission actually requested a letter to that effect be submitted for the record.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so the, the two reasons for conservation are to make sure it's native species, et cetera?
Yes.
And also that it, that it be as less dependent on irrigation as.
As possible.
Yes.
And that as many trees, deep-rooted trees as possible be added to the site. Again, the overall goal being sustainability.
Okay, so just make sure. So whatever, whatever suggestions that she has to make it more sustainable.
Yeah. She, it's what she always says, it's just right in her wheelhouse. The only thing I would add to what Nick is saying is that the first comment from the sewer department be incorporated in the decision letter, which is that the neighborhood is private and is served by a private sanitary sewer system and that it's this responsibility of the association. I think it just, we just need to remind people.
Yeah.
Because it has come up and that we just need to be very clear in the decision letter as we approve this, that we include that finding. And with that, does anybody have anything else to add? No? Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, I think Dave has it by a hair. On favor?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, so the next one we're going to do is Tiffany. We probably need to talk about Tiffany. We have two basic ideas out there. One of them was that we let him build, to let him put in the egress window earlier and the other one is that he not be able to add the extra bedroom until he's fully compliant with 6110. And do I have any discussion on that before we make a motion?
Well, it'll take him about one or two days to.
That's my take.
To, to complete the second bedroom, so let him go ahead and comply.
Okay, Mr. Yeski?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You agree with Ms. Goss?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. McRae?
I do not agree. I believe that actually that the unit has to be in compliance.
That's what she said.
Yeah, my, before the zoning permit.
I, in the same place, okay. All right, so we can do it on that basis. Mr. McRae, could I have a motion?
For the application P L P Z 2019, number one, and 2019, number two, Final Site Plan and Special Permit incorporate existing space and therefore explain an existing approved modern income dwelling from one bedroom to two bedrooms at 195 Phil Point Road. Motion to approve. Whereas the affordability.
Plan is.
-plan has been submitted to the law department as under current review. The common charges have been reduced. And now, the total lease numbers are actually within the range of the one bedroom unit. The-
What do we word that differently and just say, subject to the, that the housing specialist has-
That's what.
So, we're not making, the housing specialist will confirm that the total amount of rent being charged, or something to that extent, so that it, it's subject to that confirmation.
Total amount of rent is a-
It's kind of like when we say the Z E O.
Right, but, but-
So, what is she confirming, though?
She's confirming that the total amount of rent charged for the unit is in conformance with the M I D requirements.
Rent plus-
Rent plus common charges, I think you should specify.
Really, what she needs to confirm for us is that the common charges are, and nodding to Mr. Hardman's concern here, are consistent with the range of normal practice for M I D units. How about that?
Um, that is, I would rather you just take, I would rather you guys just take a look at what they've proposed. And, I mean, common charges are what in your minds? Their, their, electricity for the hallways. I think, I think where I-
No, it's the amount. It isn't what he's charging per, it isn't the things he's charging for. It's the, the number in total is consistent with-
No, because that's going to be different for each unit. Because we've actually gone through this on another unit. And where, where we made the differentiation was the common charge, the common areas like mowing the lawn, the snow plowing, the electricity in the hallways, that kind of thing, versus just amenities, for lack of a better way of putting it, such as use of an elevator, use of a covered parking space, use of storage rooms. Like, you know, what that implies is that you have, you know, basically X, and then anything that's above and beyond that is, it's not a common charge. It's now a common, it's a, it's an element that you're paying extra for. So, in other words, you are not the same as a market rate unit. Now, you are, all you get is, is X. You're not getting all of the, the things that come with the unit as a whole.
So, can we quantify it?
So, that's how we've differentiated it.
Can we quantify it as the rent alone is-
Always was.
1623?
Yeah, that, it always was. The problem is the common charges.
And then the common charges, to the effect actually would be, as listed on an email dated April 9th, 2019, billing maintenance of $100, heating of the common stairwells, $150, lighting common stairwells, $50, elevator maintenance and usage, $100, but not including water consumption because actually their lease said that the landlord was assuming that charge, and understanding that there'd be one uncovered parking space at no charge.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Katie, I think Dennis and Dave are asking the same question.
What if you went to Avalon and rented an apartment? You'd just have, you'd pay rent. You wouldn't get any other charge that I can think of off the top of my head. You'd pay your own utilities.
Are you, are regulations allow-
I have an apartment, and I pay common charge. It's very common to have a common charge.
But how much?
Mine's 450.
So, 300 is reasonable?
Oh, yeah. No, the, the common charges are, like, if you look at the Hayes House in Stanford, their common charges are five, 500 bucks or so, 560. Common charges are expensive. But, you know, there, there's a lot of things to maintain in those, in those big buildings. I mean, the one I was referring to is, is a building in Portchester.
Okay.
So, they're, they're up there. The 450, no, 300 is very reasonable. But I just, I just think it should be-
Okay.
-decided by you guys, not-
We done, we, we just went there, so we said 300 was acceptable.
That basement of 1623-
Plus 300 of common charges.
300 of common charges, which as, as just enumerated, excluding water consumption. And one covered a parking space, which is indicated as no charge. In addition, no zoning permit will be issued until the specific unit is in compliance with the M I D requirements.
I think it was no construction permit as well?
Well, if they don't get a zoning permit, they don't get a construction permit.
Got it, okay.
So, no zoning permit will be granted until the unit is in compliance with the M I D requirements.
Okay.
Simple enough?
Yep.
And then, the 40 year business, it's-
Oh, the 40 year starts now.
40 year or perpetuity?
Oh.
I mean, it was approved in perpetuity.
Then we'd leave it at perpetuity. It doesn't make any difference for his economics. We just talked about that yesterday. The economics are the same, because the discounted cash flow isn't worth anything four years away.
So, the M I D unit-
Right.
Is to remain in perpetuity.
I remember for 10 minutes.
But I think that the finding-
Yes.
-finding is because that was the way that the-
I was getting to that, it was a ring, so I don't, yeah.
Give him a chance, he's-
The M I D unit is to remain in perpetuity, as per the original, original application dated. And if you can just fill that way in, fill that in, please.
The date.
From the original.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, Hardman beat her again.
You're beating it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one is Parker Stacy, number eight. And here's my take. Katie, shoot me if you disagree. Victoria, number eight. It's very clear to me that when an application goes in, it's the existing regulation that applies. In my mind, we could decide this tonight, and I believe honestly that this has gone on long enough. So, if you guys aren't in objection, do you want to discuss it before Nick makes a motion, or wait till he makes a motion to discuss it?
I'm ready to decide tonight. I said that earlier.
Yes, we can decide.
Okay, everybody's ready to decide? Okey dokey. And can we do, what you want us to do, a motion to approve first?
Sure.
Or do you want to go, can we talk? Why don't we talk about it, guys, so that we don't go through the nonsense of motion to approve that nobody seconds, and that Nick has to figure out?
We have to start with a motion to approve.
I don't know.
We don't have to, no.
We don't have to. It's practice.
I think, why don't you discuss it, and then it will become obvious.
Yeah, so let's discuss it.
I think it's been presented-
Wait, everybody's talking, okay.
Yeah, I'm going first.
You're going first, okay.
It's been presented, is it?
Number eight.
We're discussing site plan. We can't do the, he left, he purposely, we had to agree to leave.
It's been presented in the application, that they're requesting a special permit for a resident medical professional office and operated counseling practice which provides individual and group psychological counseling. I'm reading both, all the sections that are pertinent to this. And one specifically talks, talks about healthcare professionals working one on one, healthcare professionals, you know, psychologists, social workers, so on and so forth.
Well, it's not-
Then we're getting to, to the resident medical professional office. And that has specific things specifically outlining what is a medical professional.
Mm hmm.
Okay. And I think actually what they're requesting is in direct conflict with what the regulation provides for. And I think on that note, there's no way around this to say, yes, actually, they can do something different. They should be doing something different, or, you know, that kind of thing. Even working, even if they were working still on the one on one, they still are not the medical professional as the regulation allows for.
As it's currently defined.
As it's currently defined in the regulation. So, I, I think, you know, this, there's actually no, there's no wiggle room on this at all. And it's, the regulation states specifically what can and can't be allowed on a property with a, with a medical use, and this does not conform to that.
Does anybody have any comment to add to that?
I, I agree with Nick.
Okay, everybody agrees with Nick.
Did you, did you want to note that the applicant themselves conceded that it doesn't?
Yeah.
Because it was-
We could note that, yeah. But we haven't made a motion yet. The other thing, besides, we were just discussing making a motion, besides the point that Nick made, Nick, as you consider making a motion, the second point is that 694, that not only is medical professional not included, but that 694 is, the intent is, that we note that the intent of the regulation is to protect residents from the incursions of a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And then, in addition, we note that a healthcare professional is not included in the medical. And so, with that-
Can I just, since it's just in discussion mode, I also think that it's a very important point, that you can, you, you all have the control to say whether there can or cannot be grouped based on your special permit powers.
Yeah, but that's not something we're going to put in the resolution-
No, I understand that.
-because we're saying the use isn't approved.
We're just, we're just discussing now, and I think, I think there was just a question saying, oh, it's obvious you can have group. And I don't think that's true at all.
No, no, it's not true at all.
See what you guys think.
No, no, it's not true at all. It was just something that got said tonight that we growled at.
Yeah.
Two, two questions?
Yes, sir.
And, and I know we're gonna, we're proposing to approve this first, is that what you're saying?
No, we're going to go ahead. It doesn't seem like anybody-
If you're going to go ahead, what's it mean to enforcement if we deny this?
It's got to shut down.
Like, do you have to go through multiple months of writing letters and all that?
You have to go through the normal procedure.
And that takes months, right?
Well, hopefully, it'll be faster than that, but it's, it could-
Then the other question, I'm not sure I can ask. I mean, no, I'm not going to ask, never mind, never mind.
When in doubt-
Don't ask.
I'm not, I didn't, I said, no, I'm not doing it.
Yep. Mr. McRae, would you like to make a motion? I think the commission has agreed that this is not, does not meet the regulations.
Okay.
Neither in actual or in intent.
Whereas, the applicant asks for a special permit approval for a resident medical professional office. It's clear that the residence is being used in a manner that's not in keeping with that, say, section 694, paragraph four, of resident medical professional, as the residents do not qualify under the specifications of that section. Whereas, the-
Sorry, so it's, it's not just that it's, it's being used, that what they're proposing-
Is not-
Doesn't, doesn't comply with-
That you proposed use does not comply with the regulations, neither with their intent nor with the definition.
Whereas, the intent of the, of the resident medical, section 6-94, paragraph four, is to protect the incursion of commercial uses into the residential zone, understanding-
Hmm?
You said to protect the incursion of commercial-
To prevent, you're right.
You meant prevent.
Sounds good to me.
Prevent incursion of commercial uses into residential zones. Let's see. Whereas, in section five, paragraph 27.7, healthcare professionals are indicated as, what is, what is, the resident medical professional, I lost my train of thought on that.
Twenty seven point two.
Yes. Section five, paragraph 27.7?
No, point, 27.2.
27.2, excuse me.
Pumpkin time.
Indicates that healthcare professionals do not have medical degrees. Whereas, in the section six dash, I need the number for the-
I closed it already. Katie, you got it in front of you.
Medical professional?
Yeah.
Is six, five, 20-
Six forty one.
Is indicated as a licensed medical professional in the state of Connecticut, i.e. doctor, dentist, surgeon. I move to-
Oh, and then 41 is the resident medical professional office, and it defines some other places in there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one other thing that I think I, just to clarify, when you were talking about 27.2, that, that refers to the one on one, not, not a group scenario.
Yes.
Right, but it's also, the heading of it is resident, is medical.
And it defines what a resident-
And this is not medical.
No, I mean, about the healthcare professional, the 27.2.
Yeah, it defines what the healthcare professional is and is not.
Right.
Okay, and I think that was the intent of actually that whereas. Okay.
I think that's kind of a-
Okay.
It's a one on one, not a group.
Okay. So, I move to deny this application.
Second.
Yaski seconds. All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
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 Because what Katie told me is that when the attorney asks to leave it open, we aren't-
He's a bad guy.
He needs one to open.